All right, Deb, are we ready to go?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the April 30th, 2019 City Council Special Meeting. I'm Mayor Debbie Burtland. Will the City Clerk please call roll?
Mayor Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saleem Nees.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Andrell.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Here.
Councilmember Wendy Wyker.
She's here.
Councilmember Dave Wiesentiner. And Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Great, thank you. So first item of business is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes and the agenda is approved. The City Council will now recess into executive session to discuss pending or potential litigation with legal counsel pursuant to RCW 4230-1101I for approximately 60 minutes. Council is not expected to take final action after this executive session. All right, counsel? I'm gonna try to run a tight ship on a sunny night. I might be overly optimistic. Okay. So counsel has actually been in session since 5 o'clock. We just completed a study session, which no action was taken. So the next item of business on this evening's agenda is a study session, and that is Agenda Bill 5547, the Mercer Island Transit Interchange and King County Metro concurrence with Sound Transit Settlement Agreement. And for that, I believe, it says I'm welcoming in City Manager Julie Underwood, but I suspect I'm going to Kirsten Taylor and Ann Tenella Howe. So welcome, thank you.
I'm your senior project manager, and I am here tonight with Assistant City Engineer Ann Tenella Howe and Michael Lappam from KPG, who is the city's on-call traffic engineering firm. A bit about Michael, for some of you who maybe have not worked with him before, he has over 20 years' experience with transportation analysis for engineering and planning studies in the Puget Sound region. He specializes in corridor studies, traffic operations modeling, safety analysis, and identifying multimodal improvements to meet future year demand. And he will be presenting from over here, and then he'll join us at the table for questions and discussion. But I would like to, just to remind anybody who's in the audience, six weeks ago, Sound Transit and Metro staff presented the Mercer Island Transit Interchange Operational and Configuration Study to the council. The council posed many questions at that time, which, some of those questions, most of them hopefully, can be found along with Metro's and Sound Transit's responses as Exhibit Three of the Agenda Bill. And to provide counsel with additional information, the city asked KPG to provide an analysis of the study and to provide recommendations, including bicycle and pedestrian access improvements near or at the station. So as the presentation, we ask counsel to hold questions as Michael goes through his presentation, and then we are allowing for plenty of time at the end for questions and discussion. So with that, Michael, go ahead.
Thank you. Got about a 15-minute presentation. We're gonna cover my firm's review of Transit Interchange and Operational Configuration Study, as well as a review of the North Mercer Way, 77th Avenue Roundabout. And then lastly, we've been working with city staff to develop some pedestrian and bicycle improvements to enhance the access to Future Light Rail Station. The figure here is from the study, and it shows the regional bus routing in green and then the local bus routing in red. Currently, the regional bus routing uses several streets and different combinations of I-90 ramps to provide service to the park-and-ride there on North Mercer Way. This figure here shows the anticipated future bus routing after the, excuse me, Light Rail Station is operational. Once the Light Rail Station is operational, buses traveling to and from the west side of I-90 will no longer be in service. The regional buses are shown in orange on the diagram here, and they will be traveling to and from the east side. The local buses on this figure are shown in green. There's several components of the regional bus service that make it an effective design. First of all, buses traveling in the I-90 HOV lane would be able to directly access the ramps typically, well, the HOV ramps on the left side of the freeway. Typically, buses in the HOV lane would have to access ramps on the right side of a freeway and have to weave over several lanes, which can be operationally and both safety challenges to do that. So that's a convenient use, both for the off-ramp and the on-ramp goes directly into the HOV lanes. Another efficient part of this design is that the 80th Avenue HOV lanes both have substantial capacity, whereas some other of the general-purpose ramps that the buses are using today can be fairly congested. Also, it has a compact design. It's the buses will only be impacting two street segments, a portion of 80th Avenue and then a large block on North Mercer Way from 77th to 80th Avenue. And also, another part that's fairly efficient is these two street segments, the adjacent land uses are the I-90 freeway and on the north side of North Mercer Way is a park-and-ride. There's no private driveways or businesses or residential driveways along these two segments of roadway. A couple of points that the study brings up about the Mercer Island Sound Transit Settlement Agreement, I just want to briefly touch on. Our bus layovers in the agreement are limited to 15 minutes and then only during the afternoon peak period. And the study cites that this would be challenging for their labor agreement where bus drivers are required to have mandatory rest periods. Another thing that it brings up in the study is that drop-offs on the north side of North Mercer Way would be limited to local buses only, and regional buses would then need to use the south-side bus bays. Now, there's three configurations looked at in the study. I'll just briefly go over these. The first one is called the limited service configuration. This would add new bus bays on the south side of North Mercer Way. You can see here. And then it would also, again, restrict the north-side bus bays to local bus service only. The second option is called improved service configuration in the study. This would also continue to have the bus, second bus bay here, and it would also add another bus bay on the north side of North Mercer Way. And the north Mercer, the bus bays on the north side of North Mercer Way would be, both serve local and regional buses. The third configuration they present in the study is called the optimal service configuration. This is the same as the last configuration, except it adds a southbound bus stop for local buses only on 80th Avenue. This would be fairly convenient for access to Light Rail Station, as you wouldn't have to cross the street, and it'd also be fairly close to the town center. A challenge with this bus stop is that it'd be in line, meaning when a bus is stopped to load or offload passengers, it would be blocking vehicles on southbound 80th Avenue. Currently, there's about 150 vehicles on southbound 80th Avenue in the morning peak hour and a little higher in the afternoon with 200 vehicles on southbound 80th. Due to the low cost of this improvement of the bus stop, it'd likely be signage and maybe a bus shelter. The bus stop could initially be included and then taken out later if it was not working due to maybe vehicle delays in 80th Avenue, or it could not be included initially, and the city could work with Metro, and later time could add it later. So there's some flexibility on if this would come in initially or not. Slide here shows the number of buses serving the Mercer Island Park-and-Ride. The first column on the left there shows the four scenarios. The middle column shows the number of AM peak hour buses accessing the park-and-ride, and the last column shows the number of PM peak hour buses. Currently, there's 36 buses during the morning peak hour, 39 buses in the afternoon peak hour. With the limited service configuration, there'd be 12 buses accessing both AM and PM. The improved configuration would go up by four buses, a little less than half of the current service. And then the optimal service would be 20 buses during both AM and PM peak hours. This would be a little more than the current service. The key findings of our review of the Transit Interchange Study are, first off, we did not find any inaccuracies in the study findings. Second off, the second point is, I mentioned before, the efficient future bus routing through, for the regional buses on the island. And lastly, there's an inverse ratio between the number of buses, number of regional buses, and the number of passenger vehicles traveling to and from the island. This means that the more bus service is provided, the fewer number of passenger vehicles we'd be expecting. And the opposite of that is the fewer buses, the more passenger vehicles that we'd be expecting on the road networks. Again, we also took a look at the conceptual design for both the roundabout and the new bus layover stations, spaces on North Mercer Way. Here's the conceptual design of the roundabout. We didn't identify any safety issues with either the new bus bays or the roundabout design. Roundabouts are typically, have better collision records than signals for a couple of reasons. One is that roundabout is designed to slow vehicle speeds to about 15 to 20 miles an hour when they're traveling through the roundabout. So if there is a collision, it's less likely to be an injury-related collision. Also, the roundabout design nearly eliminates the potential for a head-on collision or right angle, or sometimes called a T-bone collision. Those are, be very difficult with the design to have that happen. And one, another thing we did find with the roundabout design is there's currently, does not provide a connection from the I-90 trail, which travels along the north side of the roundabout. They did not provide a connection to the southbound bike lanes, which are the primary bike lanes through the town center. Transitioning to the improvements that we looked at, I first wanted to recap four improvements that Mercer, that Sound Transit and WashDOT did in advance of the closure of the I-90 Center roadway. These improvements focused on traffic operations with the new traffic patterns and were trying to maintain the level of service standards on the island. The first one here, at the Island Crest Way, North Mercer Way intersection, the improvement that they implemented was to provide green arrow or protected left-turn phase at that intersection to help facilitate the northbound movement on Island Crest Way to make a left turn on westbound North Mercer Way. And so now with the left-turn arrow, drivers do not have to yield oncoming southbound cars, and they have the right-of-way to make that movement. The second improvement is at the 77th and now at North Mercer Way intersection. Temporary traffic signal is constructed in this location. This will be improved to a roundabout with the Transit Interchange. A third improvement was at 76th Avenue, North Mercer Way intersection. This was a new traffic signal to accommodate the higher traffic volumes at this intersection. And then lastly, the westbound on-ramp at 76th Avenue previously was one on-ramp lane, and now is widened by WashDOT to have two on-ramp lanes to accommodate the higher traffic volumes. A future improvement that hasn't been implemented yet but is scheduled to happen before the Light Rail Station opens is a new signal at the 80th Avenue and 27th Street intersection, shown here. This will address traffic operations at this intersection and will also help pedestrians to cross the four legs of the intersection. Again, we worked with city staff to identify some additional pedestrian safety and access improvements to get to the Light Rail Station or just even to generally circulate around the town center. These are shown in blue on the new map here. We have two improvements on 27th Avenue at the two traffic signals at 77th and 78th intersections. Another proposed improvement at Sunset Highway and 77th Avenue here. And then the last one here at 80th Avenue and North Mercer Way. Spend a little moment to take a look at this last one, because it's part of the Transit Interchange. And also, the west leg of this intersection has the most number of pedestrian crossings of any of the intersections on the island. Currently, during the afternoon peak hour, there's approximately 200 pedestrians cross the west leg of this intersection. And our recommended improvement would be, currently, when a vehicle's traveling northbound on 80th Avenue and wants to make a left turn to westbound North Mercer Way, they can make that left turn at the same time that pedestrians are crossing the west leg of the crosswalk. They just need to wait for a gap in southbound traffic, as well as a gap in the pedestrians. And our recommended improvement would be to separate those two movements, so that northbound left-turn movement would not occur at the same time as a pedestrian crossing phase. So this would reduce the potential for a vehicle-pedestrian collision on the crosswalk on the west leg there. The downside to this improvement is it would add minor delay at the traffic signal. This slide just kind of walks through the recommendation I just talked about. And that concludes my, the presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Kirsten, should we take questions from Michael now, or did you have a presentation you wanted to follow up with?
No, there's no further presentation. We are just, would welcome any questions you have, either on things that have been presented, or perhaps questions that Michael could speak to that he didn't already present about.
Great, okay. So counsel, we are open for questions. Does anybody want to take it up? Okay, we have Saleem, and then Benson, and Lisa.
So one of the, one of the key things in reading this is that you've said there's no inaccuracies, but I do read a lot of statements that we just kind of take as fact. One of the operational requirements is this 15-minute union requirement brake. And I'm wondering, a 550 bus, a bus that's coming through right now, how are they accommodating this? And how is this something new, right? I mean, have you looked at that piece of information to kind of determine if this is really a problem, or is this...
Excuse me. My understanding is that the brakes are occurring at the beginning and the end of the routes. And currently, the 550 is not, on Mercer Island, it's kind of the middle of the route. So that 15-minute time period is not needed when, well, 550's not gonna, was gonna plan to go away, but the other, other buses will, the end of the route or the beginning of the route will be on the island, and that's when, my understanding is that the driver's brake periods would need to occur.
Sorry, so just to follow along, clearly, we need to know where does it come from and where does it go back to? It's gonna be a circuit, most likely. And the question would just be, couldn't it be elsewhere? Rather than stop and wait on Mercer Island, if it originated in Issaquah, is it conceivable that within the union contract, that bus could leave Issaquah, come to Mercer Island, pick up a trainload of people, get back to Issaquah, and the driver could take a break somewhere?
Yeah, that is, there's a potential for that. I think the goal for them is to time the buses to be, when the Light Rail train stops, lets off people, to have the bus, you know, ready and waiting for a quick transfer is what I think is their, their idea behind that.
Okay. Benson, then Lisa.
Thanks, Michael. You know, you mentioned that KPG did not identify any safety issues, or at least, yeah, no safety issues with the, with the roundabout. And also, I guess, in looking at your presentation regarding people crossing the street on 80th from the north side to the south side, you know, I, are you actually saying that there's no safety issues, or that it's simply a matter of mitigating against safety concerns? I, I think, you know, I guess for me, the fact that you're gonna have so many people crossing the crosswalk, people potentially missing, don't want to miss a train, so they may be going against the light or whatever. I'm just kind of concerned about the analysis that you guys have. And I know that there's also, another safety issue was related, but it involves cars coming out of the lower level of the parking garage onto North Mercer Way, so sightlines and whatever. So can you just sort of go through this a little bit in greater detail in terms of safety and mitigation? I, I still have some, personally, I just have some concerns.
Sure, understand. Try to take the points one at a time. First point about, you know, jaywalking or crossing against the light, you know, there's not much we can engineer for that. That's a little bit out of control. People are gonna take that chance, you know? They're gonna get across the street faster, but it's gonna be at their own safety risk. Regarding the second or driveway to the west, that driveway is right-in, right-out, which is a safe configuration, kind of only having to yield to one direction of traffic when you're pulling out. And the bus, the new bus bay is located to the west of that, and so as you make a right turn, there's no sight distance issue that would be created by the bus bay, as the only traffic you have to yield to is, is coming behind you. Does that, does that make sense?
But you're also gonna have buses, it does, thank you, but you'll also have buses on your left potentially coming and dropping off people right on the north, on the north side of North Mercer Way.
Should we get that?
Yeah, maybe. So you can just, that driveway you're talking about is just on the edge of the screen here. And with the right-out, the right-out movement, this driveway is again, is just right, right-in, right-out, so there's no left turns allowed at this location. So as you pull out, you really just need to watch behind you. Right turns are one of the more safer movements out there. Did I, did I answer all, all of your...
It, it does, but I mean, again, there, there may come a time where people are trying to make a right turn, and there's a bus to your left. And so, I mean, that's...
Blocking line of sight, maybe?
Right, right. But that may be something that's inevitable, but that could be a potential safety issue.
If I can pick up, because I, what I took away from what Benson said is if you're taking a right turn and you're gonna head west on North Mercer Way, if there's a bus behind you parked in, in that bay, because that essentially becomes a continuous cutout, would the bus, as you're getting ready to turn right as you leave, would the bus that is east of you potentially block your line of sight, be it for, well, primarily for cars?
So my understanding is that, this is the current condition, there's not a change, that, that, the layout of that bus bay and that driveway are the same as today with their future plan?
So there's two distinct cutouts, they're not contiguous?
Yeah, so the one we're seeing here is the new one that would be added. The one to the east is already there today in the same configuration and length that's out there today. So it would, I don't, it's not a new condition that we're, that we're talking about.
Okay. Lisa?
Thanks. So on the north side of West Mercer, east of, or, on the, on the north side of North Mercer Way, east of the lower-level exit, that's an existing bus drop-off and pickup area. Is that going to be layover space, or is that gonna just be drop-off and pickup?
My understanding is that's where the buses will offload. You're talking about on the north side?
Of North Mercer.
Just off our screen here.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's where local and regional buses would, would drop off people, they would then circulate around the roundabout and pick up people.
Or they would go layover?
Yeah, they'd lay, well, they'd drop off there, likely layover, and then pick up after that timing with a Sound Transit train or wherever the layover duration of the rest period was done.
Okay, and there are four layover spaces, and 15 minutes per, that gives you...
16 buses per hour.
16 buses per hour. And so there, during the peak hour, there could conceivably be buses laying over every minute of every hour. All four layover spaces full.
Sure.
So there are 36 buses now during peak time, and I think you said that'd be, depending on the configuration, the service configuration, it would either be 12, 16, or 20, is that right? So how many, how many trains will there be in addition to those buses?
I remember reading, I believe it's every eight minutes that the trains are gonna run in.
I think that was the average, is every eight minutes.
In, in one direction?
I think in each direction is what it took.
So every four minutes, if you count both directions? Well, every eight minutes in one direction would be, if you look at both directions, then it'd be...
Yeah. So seven and a half trains per hour in one direction, seven and a half trains per hour in the other direction?
Yes.
That seems like a lot. What... Talk to me a little bit about this inverse ratio, more buses equals fewer vehicles, fewer buses equals more vehicles. I don't, that's not intuitively obvious to me, so I'd like a little bit more of the thought process behind that or the analysis behind that.
Yeah, it's, and I'm not talking a large bump, like, for every bus that's provided, it's an opportunity for people living off the island to go to work on the island, to visit somebody, a service, their job. Vice versa, when they come back, it's an opportunity for someone living on the island to go work somewhere else. And so for each bus, we would expect more than one bus rider to be, be on that bus. So if you start, if you start thinking, if you cut the buses in half, there's a certain amount of, it's two, it's twofold. One is, certain people are gonna shift, the more difficult something is, the more people are gonna do a mode shift. If you completely cut all the buses off, there'd be a certain population, either traveling to the island or traveling away from the island, that would now have to find another mode, and it would likely be a passenger vehicle. Does that, that kind of make sense?
So you're not necessarily saying more buses on, more cars on the island?
It could be, it'd be equal chance almost for a car, someone that lives on the island to go somewhere else. But now, rather than taking a bus to their job or some service, or, they would now have to get into a car and make that same trip.
And everyone who comes from the east side on a bus and disembarks the bus and gets on a, will either stay here on the island or will get on a train?
Say it again, please.
So anybody who comes from the east side routes, the only routes that are gonna be left for bus service are to and from the east side?
Yes.
And anybody who disembarks on the island will either stay on the island for work or play, or get on the train?
Yeah, I want to, I want to qualify a little bit what I said before. They would still have the opportunity to take Light Rail to the next place that might get them there, but it would become increasingly, the more difficult it is to use transit, the more likely we are, less people do it, it's intuitively, the longer it takes, the lower ridership we would expect to see. Can you please ask your last question again?
I don't think so. So I was just trying to figure out the impact to citizens on the island or people who, you know, who benefit from people coming onto the east side. And I guess my question is, is... I'm just kind of trying to come at it sideways or backwards or whatever. I'm just trying to figure out why everybody's coming from the east side, why you would bring them onto Mercer Island in a configuration that makes them change their mode of transportation to get further on, and why the optimum configuration wouldn't in fact be getting on the train at the gigantic Bellevue Park-and-Ride? That pushes, it, people, people are coming from the east side anyway. What that does is it keeps them closer to their originating points in their vehicles and gets them on transit earlier. So I'm, I'm really struggling with that. I'm really struggling with, and I'll just say this, put it out there, the potential additional congestion this is gonna cause onto the island, the potential that it, to cause a, just kind of a wasteland on North Mercer between 77th and 80th, and I really... And I really, I just don't see the benefit for the island or the citizens. And I'm really, really struggling with feeling boxed in on this, and so.
I think for now, what I would, what I would suggest is let's go into the questions, because I think there's still some data that different council members need or clarification, et cetera. And because it's 6:30, then I want to make sure that council has the time to share, you know, summarize what their thinking is based on the new information they have. So the extent to which there's a short clarification, that would be great. But I also know that Bruce, Wendy, myself would like to be asking some questions before we get into the conversation. So Anne, super.
I think I have a quick response. The buses that will be coming onto the island are only buses coming along the I-90 corridor. So from Issaquah through East Gate to Mercer Island, and then they'll turn around and go back. That is my understanding. The only regional bus will be the 554. Everyone else that may have been taking a bus previous to the light rail station opening, anybody who lives in the Bellevue side of I-90 will be able to and will be, and are being encouraged to get to the various station entrances in that greater Bellevue-Redmond corridor alignment and getting on light rail to take them into Seattle. So I think the, I think that wasn't clear to me before. Became clear a couple of weeks ago. So we really are only talking about picking up along that, or I shouldn't say we. Metro is really only talking about picking up along that I-90 corridor that will not be served by light rail at this point.
Can you clarify whether or not that includes Renton? Because I was, to be honest, I was under the impression that there was the potential for buses to be coming from down south onto Mercer Island, because this would be the logical place to bring them. So is that confirmed?
Yeah, they have confirmed that any of the buses going up 405 will go to South Bellevue.
Just to add what Anne said, why not, why Mercer Island over South Bellevue Park and Ride? Is the buses will be, like Anne said, on I-90 in the HOV lane. And Bellevue, they'd have to weave over to the ramps on the right side, the general purpose ramps, and enter from Bellevue Way to go eastbound again on the right side. And the buses would be required to weave over to the HOV lanes.
But isn't there a planned reconfiguration of that HOV lane that's going to make it?
I think I'm going to go ahead and let some other council members take some questions.
Well, I would like that question answered at some point.
Yeah, definitely, we'll register that. I just want to be cognizant of time and giving other council members. I think we have, I have Bruce and then Wendy, whether it's Wendy and Bruce, I'll let you go. Okay, great.
So I have two questions, if I might. And first I want to say that we are going to have fewer buses on the island, right? I've seen many times over the last several months that it's going to be from 30 buses down to less than 20, right? And you had a chart to that effect too. So I encourage you to sit down with some of the staff and government relations folks from Sound Transit Metro and our consultant to sort of get more of the technical background, because there's a lot, a lot of documentation around all this. And having your questions answered in detail, I think, is really helpful for when you get here. So my first question is about that 80th Street and Park and Ride pedestrian crosswalk. You said there's something we can do there to minimize risk from people turning left and the people using the crosswalk.
Sure.
So if you could, is that a light, is that a bright red flag, what is that?
It's a change to the current traffic signal that's there. It's different signal phases. Right now, I got it up there behind you. But just to reiterate, so now there's a signal, part of the signal phase where this left turn movement can occur at the same time as the pedestrians in the crosswalk. And the change to the signal phasing would do not allow those two to occur simultaneously. So we would, unless someone was doing something illegal, they would, we would remove the potential conflict between a northbound left turn and the pedestrian crosswalk. The left turns are a little more dangerous than a right turn, because they have to look at oncoming cars as well as the pedestrians, so it could be a lot to deal with. Also the speeds, you can make a left turn a little higher than a right turn, which is a very sharp movement and you need to do it at low speeds. So that's the improvement that we'd be looking at implementing.
My second question was, I saw in the memo there was something about improved bike routes and access coming from North Mercer Way down 77th. So folks can kind of come off the bike path and head south on the island. Is that contemplated in the traffic circle, sort of being part of the roundabout?
When we looked at, I think we might be talking about the same thing. When we looked at their design, there's a way to go northbound on 77th Avenue in the bike lane, and you can use this crossing here. But if you're traveling on the I-90 trail and you want to access the bike facilities southbound, there's no, there's no similar connection. There's only one crosswalk here. I think this is the reason why I think they didn't put the crosswalks here is due to space, as well as there's no sidewalks along these two lengths of streets. So they did not provide a crossing here. Something they needed to maybe revise in their design, but just wanted to call it out.
Pay attention to that as we get down the road.
Great, we have Bruce, then I'm going to take a turn, and then we have Celine, and then Benson again.
Wendy just touched on, and you just touched on my main question, which is, you know, so what in terms of this question about bikes going south? And so what you're suggesting is that we need to ask Sound Transit to develop a solution to that.
Yes.
And that seems like that makes perfect sense. Going, if I could then, going back to the 80th North Mercer Way intersection, it made sense what you said about changing the signal such that pedestrians and left-turning vehicles are not conflicting with each other. You described it as a slightly, a slight delay that that would create. Do you have a seconds?
Yeah, so we did model this. It'd be between three and five seconds of additional, the average delay of all the vehicles going through the intersection during both the AM and PM peak hours would go up by three to five seconds, because it is less efficient. Having vehicles make a left turn when there's a gap in traffic obviously improves the efficiency of the intersection. So we'd be taking a step back to enhance the pedestrian's safety.
Okay, and additionally, see the crosswalk looks bright red in this picture.
It's not.
Is that just to highlight it?
That's just to highlight it, yes.
Okay, that wasn't to somehow suggest marking it differently to?
That is something we could consider, with some kind of textured pavement or something like that. But that is just to call it out a little clearer.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to focus as well on that intersection. And I'm going to go back, just to remind at least ourselves that in the Agenda Bill, it's outlined that there's a following, it says there's a following set of goals. And we've been through those goals, but one of those is minimizes the transfer walk distance, the number of street crossings for bus rail transfers. In the settlement agreement, we have those buses dropping off on the south side of North Mercer Way for that very reason. We still have that goal in there, and yet now in all these configurations, we're dropping off on the north side, which is in direct conflict to that goal. So we're going to drill down from there. When I was trying to think about what this means, if you say that there's 20 buses an hour, the big distinction is now there might be fewer buses, but the buses are, for lack of a better word, disgorging all their passengers now. Whereas historically, people were not getting off on Mercer, they were staying on the 550 and going into Seattle. So we have two changes. We have a change in the number of buses, but we also have a significant change in the number of people who are transitioning on the north end of the island. So if we were to do some basic math and we were to say 20 buses an hour, and let's just even say it's 75 people a bus, I mean, can you tell me how many does the 550 hold on a full run? Kirsten, I threw this, I know I had this question out for staff last week. All right, so we'll take 75 unless anybody's got a better suggestion. That basically means then that every three minutes, you're going to have 75 people getting off a bus during peak and trying to cross that intersection. And I give credit to the deputy mayor who points out, not all those guys are going to get off and gals are going to get off the bus at the same time and go straight across the road. It's going to take them a while to get out, they're going to have their phones, they're going to be making phone calls. They're not going to make it through on a single crossing. So in essence, what you're looking at is having between, and I'm just doing rough math here, 75 to 150 people, depending on what the sequencing of buses, trying to get across that. And as the Metro representative said a couple of weeks ago, hearing that train and having one thing on their mind. And that one thing on their mind is going to be to get to that next train, not to wait for an extra, X number of minutes for the light to turn again. So I appreciate that everything that's been presented here is about people following the rules and being law-abiding and safety first. But we've had testimony from Metro that that isn't really necessarily the mindset of all people who are going to land at this intersection. So I'm looking somehow, some way to get confirmation that this isn't going to just turn into a big pedestrian cyclist auto munch, particularly in those mornings. And all I can say is an open-ended question helped me get through my complete stress over this, because I just don't see this happening cleanly or safely. So convince me, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
I don't think I'm not trying to convince you, but I will point out that all the vehicles using the transit center or the park and ride will still need to cross. So that part of our audience hasn't changed as much. Previously, they needed to only cross once of their two trips. If they go into Seattle, they didn't have to cross when they got out of their car, they had to cross coming back. So that group is still about the same, the same amount of parking spaces, obviously, but now.
440, 420?
427, I believe. But now we've times them by two, because now they have to cross both times.
But not at the same time of day? Once in the morning and once in the afternoon?
Yes.
I'm talking about a snapshot in the morning where you've got 20 buses coming through per hour. And if you're saying 20 buses times 75 people, that's what, 1,500 people? And we know the park and ride is probably within a 45-minute period of time. The 400 people is not going to be, it's actually 1.2 people per parking space if you go by Metro's numbers. That's not going to be as material as the number of people getting off those buses.
I don't have the bus ridership numbers, but 75 does seem high. And the 550, which is one of the busier buses, will be being replaced by the light rail.
550, this is why I've been asking for numbers for the last couple of weeks, including the number of boardings at the station. We've had that number presented a couple of years ago. We had that number presented when they were first going through the station design, because they needed to know how long to make the platform in the middle, and they had estimated ridership. So the information is out there, and this is why it's getting very hard to, I'm going to be quiet because it's not a question anymore. It's getting very hard to advocate for any constructive solution without having more information. So I would suggest that we, for the sake of conversation, we continue to go forward. But I'm, like Lisa, I think I'm going to register concern in current lack of satisfaction on that one. Celine, you were next, and then we have Benson.
I was captivated by that math.
Hi, love of math.
We can zoom out a little bit for the math, even though I love it. And we could just say each bus that comes in might take two pedestrian cycles to disembark those passengers to the train side. Is that fair?
Two passenger cycles or?
Right, or two crossing cycles, right?
Light signals.
So the fast exitters get off and they make the first crossing, the people that need more time make the second crossing. So if you were to do the math, you said you modeled this intersection. You have a bus every three minutes coming off I-90 that needs to make a left-hand turn to get to the north side of North Mercer Way. And then you have two crossings of pedestrians that are related to every three-minute bus. You have traffic coming from I-90 down North Mercer Way that is, some of it's going to go straight, some of it's going to turn left, some of it's going to turn right. And then you have the 200, you called it 200 pedestrian crossings per PM for the park and ride. So there's 400 of those a day, but that was 200 an hour, I think you said.
Yes.
So if you have, I don't know, call it 1,600 bus riders and 200 of those guys crossing 1,800 per hour at peak, what does that model really look like in terms of people getting through the intersection? Does it have any latency? Or is it just signalization to signalization nonstop with queuing? Because to me, the timing is just not adding up. I mean, I look at lights and pedestrian crossing. Anne and I have talked about lights and the requirements for people to cross. It's got to blink red for a certain number of seconds. You have to account for the pedestrian that it's green and their foot goes off the curb, and it blinks for the first time red as that foot is in the air, it hasn't even touched the pavement. They still need the time to get across by the code standards. I'm just shocked that with what we're talking about volume-wise, that this is being done and deemed safe when it was contemplated to be done on the south side. So that's one part. I guess I would have a little bit more ease if you could tell me where in the United States somebody is doing this, you know, dropping off all of their train passengers on one side of a busy street and then having them cross to the other side of the busy street to catch a train and show me that that's working well and not causing any safety issues.
Yeah, I'd have to come back with some case studies of other locations that might be doing a similar treatment.
I would have to encourage us to ask Metro Sound Transit to do that rather than have the city consultant do it, because I feel like this is, this is something that they're probably far more qualified to do, and then we can certainly use your services to double-check and triple-check. So with that, I think we have Benson, then Lisa, then Wendy, and then we're going to have to figure out how to move forward.
Yeah, I'm just going to tag on to this. I mean, you've heard the discussion, I think, although the line of questioning really is focused on the concern about pedestrian safety crossing North Mercer Way. And I know that we have asked repeatedly, why can't Metro simply drop off passengers on the south side of North Mercer Way? Now, they have provided their answers, I mean, it's basically part of the Q and As. And my concern is that we're being asked to sort of take their analysis at face value without having our own expertise, experts basically provide a second opinion. And that's my main concern, and that's sort of, I heard maybe in the mayor's comments or maybe I was reading into the mayor's comments, that we sort of need to have that second opinion. I mean, is there a way that we can actually have Metro drop off passengers on the south side? Now, their comeback is something about the need to have layover space. Well, I'd just like to have somebody else, whether it's KPG or some other expert, provide us their own analysis to confirm whether or not that statement by Metro is actually correct or whether or not there's some alternative that we haven't looked at, or maybe that Metro hasn't looked at. But I think if we can drop passengers off on the south side, that alleviates or addresses a lot of the questions that you're hearing being raised. And it's not fair to you, I mean, obviously you weren't asked necessarily to respond to that. I guess I would be interested in knowing whether or not KPG has the expertise to do that kind of analysis, to look at alternative, alternatives. If the premises were dropping off passengers on the south side, how can that be done and yet somehow meet the operational needs of Metro? That's more of a statement than a question, but I, you know, it's a little.
Just keep nodding.
Yeah, it is frustrating that we're being asked to accept Metro's analysis at face value. And it may very well be the right analysis. I don't have the expertise to question it, but I'd rather have my own expert take a look at it.
So Benson, I think what I'm hearing you is more of a broader statement to council and staff that you're interested in having some assessment slash validation or testing of some of the configuration assumptions?
Yes.
Okay. Lisa and then Wendy, and then I want to figure out where we're going to go from here, unless, Celine or Bruce, you got another? Okay, all right, super. So let's go to Lisa then, Wendy?
Okay, thanks. And I just had a statement that's been prompted by some of this commentary. And I don't know that, I mean, I like the idea of picking up and dropping off all on the same side, on the south side, but I think the point of fact is there are going to be people who park in the park and ride who will come over from the east side. And then if you're dropping off on the north side, then they're the ones who don't have to cross the street. So, yeah, I just, I don't know. I think more research is quickly called for on all of these various configurations. The question I have for you is, how is Metro proposing or Sound Transit proposing that people from Issaquah and Smamish get to Bellevue? Are they going to have to ride the bus into Mercer Island and then get on the train headed back the same direction that they just came from?
I don't, I'm not familiar with the route connections between Issaquah and Bellevue.
Because I mean, my point being is that if they're going to take Issaquah buses into Bellevue, then problem solved.
I think the buses come from Issaquah to Mercer Island?
Yes.
If what I understood from you, Anne, is that the I-90 corridor comes to Mercer Island, the north-south goes into Bellevue, sort of that 405-ish?
Right, but what if you live in Issaquah and you want to get to the South Bellevue Station?
Yeah, I'm going to presume that Metro has some existing routes today that would. Yeah, I'm going to presume that Metro has some existing routes today that would take people from Issaquah into the Bellevue-Cirkland area. I don't know what those routes are. And if, and if people were, are today taking a route from Issaquah to the South Bellevue Park-and-Ride, it's another piece, I don't know if, I, I would project that Metro has looked at what their routing will be if they want to keep that kind of a route ongoing. I just don't know what that would be.
Yeah, so I just want to be perfectly clear, though. I mean, otherwise, what Metro or Sound Transit are proposing is that people from Issaquah and Sammamish ride to Mercer Island, get off the bus, get on a train headed from Mercer Island to South Bellevue, and that just seems crazy.
I'm not sure. I think we would have to ask that because what I also understood is that they'll be doing route configuration work, I think it was two years before the advent. I think your, your point is, is making sure that the assumptions are logical in terms of the ridership that comes onto the island.
Right, and if, if they're already going to take buses from Issaquah and Sammamish and take them to South Bellevue because there was a demand for that, then that suggests to me that that's where they can pick up light rail and they don't have to come into Mercer Island to do that.
Okay, great. So I think Wendy and then Bruce, I know you had some comments.
So I'm just going to bring us back to the question at hand, which is which configuration do we like best? And I'm just going to put out there that I like the optimal service configuration because it gives us the most flexibility to work with Metro and Sound Transit down the road to figure out where drop-off should be, what pedestrian improvements there should be, and having the hardscape there for that flexibility, as well as additional modes of transportation we might not be thinking about, gives us the greatest opportunity not to have to redo any work and to make sure we put the right infrastructure in place to serve whatever transportation systems and service and bus and people and bikes and walkers are going to use this whole transit center, I think I saw on one of the maps. So I'm in favor of optimal service to give us ultimate flexibility in the short term and the long term.
Okay, great. Bruce?
Thank you. This question of pedestrians crossing, I'll point out, first of all, that there are a couple of solutions to that. The first being the, the original design proposed by Sound Transit and Metro, which had the buses coming off the off-ramp, turning left, going through the town center, and then coming around and going back on. And that solved the problem because then you had the opportunity to have multiple drop-off points, in fact, where there is no crossing of the street. We rejected that as unacceptable because we didn't want those buses traveling through the town center. So we limited them in, in where they could go. We talked about having them just stay on 80th till further limit them. That would have kept them from crossing the street as well. After we looked at what they actually put together for that, we rejected that as well. So two different designs that avoid a crossing have been proposed, and we have, not they, but we have rejected them. Beyond that, they, the, you know, there's also a sort of an undercurrent here of, well, we said they need to drop off on the south side, but you'll recall that we said that in a negotiation with Sound Transit, which Metro was not at the table. And Metro, in then looking at this, has said, well, that doesn't work for us. I think it's hard for us to, to declare Metro sort of out of bounds when they weren't at the table in the first go-round. So I appreciate the work KPG's done here to analyze this and determine that it can be set up to be safe to have that crossing occur. I think that that is the best of a number of options that are available to us. And so at the end of the day, I, I think it is time after actually years of looking at these different alternatives for us to say, we've reached the point where this is the, the preferred alternative and to adopt it. Now, between the, the optimal and the improved, it's a minor difference and one that can be changed on the fly later on. But I think it makes sense to have the Mercer Island buses using that different drop-off point. It shortens the walk for, for those folks. It doesn't appreciably slow traffic, and so it would be my preference to have us go with what's being called the optimal service configuration rather than the improved service configuration.
Okay. Saleem, did you want to weigh in? I think we're kind of on getting, we're, we're doing sort of a temperature read on council right now. We've been asked to provide, you know, direction. I'm curious whether or not we can get to direction.
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor. I have to think about it a little bit. I did think of a couple of examples to your earlier question. On Sound Transit, it's Link Light Rail in South Seattle, apologize if my voice is going a little bit. On Seattle, on Link Light Rail in South Seattle on Martin Luther King, a lot of the buses, the transit center stations are actually in the middle of the roadway. So all passengers accessing those stations would have to cross, every single one of them would have to cross either one side or the other of Martin Luther King, which is a substantially busier, busier roadway with two travel lanes in each direction than what North Mercer Way is. So I think there is some local examples of all passengers having to cross the busy street to get to the light rail station.
Yeah, so, but my, my concern is that this is a stop that is distinctly different where 100% of the passengers disembark and cross, whereas somebody going to MLK, you know, you may lose X percent of the, of the train car at any given stop, but not 100% of it.
If, if I could for just a second, and you'll want to, you'll, somebody will want to check this, but my understanding is that at the university station, a similar occurrence is occurring, a similar circumstance is happening where buses coming over the 520 Bridge are disgorging all their passengers to board light rail. And in the morning, they're on the right side, the, the no-crossing side of the, the street. But in the afternoon, those folks have to cross the street. So in, in that, that would probably be a situation worth looking at because it's, I think, sort of directly similar.
My, my heartburn on this is that I'm looking at the constraints in which Metro looked at the site, and they're saying, I've got to have a bus that comes from the east going to the west, it needs to exit at the center, it needs to get, if passengers disembarked, it has to have a layover, and then I need to go back to the east. And they're deciding that they can do it one, one way. And since they need consistency in passengers getting off, they're deciding to unload all routes, all buses on the north side of North Mercer Way, where I think they could look at operational modes where maybe a bus comes in from Issaquah and all Issaquah buses disembark on the south side of North Mercer Way, but Eastgate buses disembark on the north side of North Mercer Way. I think there's more thinking that could be done. I'm not convinced that this plan is fully baked because they had an 80th pullout and Wastaw shot it down, and we didn't hear any plan change. It just disappeared altogether. We also have the local stop on 80th for Mercer Island routes is only presented in one of these three options. And what it would do, if you just look at the mechanics of it, is it would take frequency of trips out of a very congested area and move them elsewhere. I don't know why they wouldn't propose that in all three of the options because it would decongest an area by all those local routes, take the Mercer Island buses out of that area. So to me, there's more discussion that needs to be had, and I would be favoring taking a more limited option that would get us at the table, talking to Sound Transit and Metro about operational improvements while we're in the planning phase. I, I don't want to put a bus interchange in that says, well, have at it, do, do the maximum, not, not, having had the discussion in earnest, you know, I wasn't on this council when the Sound Transit agreement was negotiated. So I didn't, I didn't have the benefit of all these options in what we did or didn't do, but I didn't agree to them either. So I'm going to look at this with a fresh set of eyes, and I'm going to say, there's more work that I think could be done, and I'm going to support the limited option, knowing that, that we need to have more discussions and more facts.
Okay, just as a quick reminder, council now is just providing some perspective recognizing that Sound Transit and Metro aren't actually at the table. And Michael is actually here on behalf of the city and was asked to do this assessment. So just to make sure that we kind of understand different people's roles. Benson, did you want to provide some feedback? And then I'm going to, and then we're going to figure our way out of this.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I think what I'm hearing, well, first of all, I appreciate Councilmember Bassett's providing the, the context and kind of the historical reference because I think it's actually, it's correct. What I, I guess I take a little bit of exception is simply that, again, we're being asked to accept Metro's analysis, and I think, listening to the deputy mayor and maybe to the mayor as well, and as I said before, I personally would like to see an analysis from somebody that is retained by the city just to provide that second opinion whether or not, I mean, what's driving Metro is simply their, their need, their stated need for layover. And that may very well be, may very well be the case. I just don't know. I, I want somebody that is on our side, basically either confirming that or basically providing alternatives. But, you know, if we could have drop-off on the south side, that'd be my preference.
Okay, I'm going to weigh in. And, and Bruce is right, there was a lot of history and there was a lot of things that were, were rejected, but I can also remember the painful eight hours of that negotiation. The south side of North Mercer Way was held on to, was advocated for, for some pretty good reasons, and I'm not quite ready to, to let them go yet, I think, for, you know, a variety of, of issues that have been raised here tonight. What I want to suggest is, I, my response is, I am not yet ready to support a configuration. I can't say, you know, whether it's the optimal, the baseline, et cetera, but I know that I'm not ready to do that because I feel that there is still more work and more conversation that needs to happen. I'm sensing already that we're not going to get to four, a thumbs up on four people because although, you know, we're not officially voting, which means that we wouldn't be able to provide clear direction to staff this evening. I see two options, one, or a couple of different options. One would be to break into some small working groups where I think those of us who have some very specific concerns can go and meet, you know, including probably Sound Transit and Metro and really hash through this. The other option would be to create a very short-term ad hoc subcommittee, which, you know, has pros and cons to it, and really focus on, on the questions that we feel need to be asked. And again, have the ability to sit face-to-face with the sources of information because, again, the three of you are in sort of a, a never, never land of, of trying to represent what another couple of agencies want. So I would suggest to council that, you know, sit here and ponder how we move forward. And I would suggest it's either some small working groups, it's potentially another study session such that it's public, and/or we come up with a short-term ad hoc subcommittee. With that, Lisa, do you have any definitive closing statements that's going to clarify all this?
Thanks. Well, I appreciate your comments, I appreciate Saleem's. I definitely, if I were forced to pick a configuration today, it would be the limited configuration. It honestly feels very premature and, and very unduly pressuring the council to make this commitment three and a half years before bus, before bus service ends and light rail starts. I don't think we know anything nearly enough. If, if Metro wants significant concessions from us in terms of the optimal configuration, that's a modification to the settlement agreement, and I think there should be some quid pro quo for that. So that's where I'm coming from right now. It doesn't answer any of the questions, but I just wanted that on the table.
So you're not ready?
I would very much oppose the optimal or the improved at this point. We don't know enough, we don't have evidence that it benefits citizens of Mercer Island. It's, it's a big burden on the city, I think, and the city gets nothing for it.
Benson?
Just a point of clarification. I mean, it, it's not really a modification of the settlement agreement because the settlement agreement contemplated that whatever was, had to, had to meet the operational needs of Metro. I think, again, I think the focus is whether or not we know what those operational needs are, and that's, again, the reason why, either if you have an ad hoc, I still, if we have an ad hoc or some other study session, we need to have our own person provide us some analysis, not just rely on Metro's statements.
Julie and Kirsten, I'm going to look to you both for some guidance. Any, any thoughts on whether or not we have a couple of council members meet at a time with Sound Transit and Metro, and then that information, of course, becomes public, or whether we have a short-term ad hoc? Because I also want to respect that, you know, for all that there's three and a half years, there's also, you know, a lot of work that needs to be done that goes into design, et cetera. So, and time, two years has passed. Julie, Kirsten, any suggestions on, on how you would suggest council get to a point where they're comfortable, at least in terms of data?
I think either of your suggestions we could work with. We will need to talk with Metro and Sound Transit staff because it, it also, and they have to make staff available, and I think that they will. I think it depends on what council is most comfortable with, either appointing an ad hoc committee to be those, you know, the council members representing the full council to meet and have those discussions with Metro and Sound Transit, or if you would prefer to meet in small groups so that all of you have the opportunity at different times to have conversations with the staff.
Can we just be clear about what we're trying to get to? Are we trying to get to volumes? Are we trying to get to layovers?
Well, I think everybody, I'm hearing lots of different questions. You know, me, there's safety, I think Benson is looking for some independent confirmation. Lisa's got some questions about bus routing, I think, from, from the east. So there's a, there's a variety of questions. For me, what I'm trying to get to is the forum where council can get the information that each of us respectively needs to come up with, whether it's, you know, one of the three options laid out or there's a hybrid somewhere. But Bruce, I think you wanted to jump in.
Just quickly, I, I do think there are three things going on here. You've, you've named two, small groups, ad hoc committee, but Benson has said we need a, a third party, I don't think it's KPG, it could be, it could not be, but I think your, your role so far has been around traffic movements, not around justification of Metro's proposal. And so, to the extent that that, I, I believe that that is a third entity and, you know, if that's what some council members need, I'm supportive of us, but I think that's us spending some money to get somebody to bird-dog what Metro has told us. And, sorry, and it feels to me like that might be first, in a sense, before we do further sort of talking to Metro, because to the extent that you don't believe that Metro is giving you kind of the, all the options or the options, you need somebody else to look at it. You kind of want that information before you go into the conversation with them, I think.
Julie, do you, anything you want to weigh in on here?
I'm going to need a council majority to tell me whether or not we need to hire an outside consultant to evaluate Metro's operational plan, if that's what you want to do. But I need a majority of you to tell me that. And I don't know, I mean, I, I have no idea, but, you know, that's something we can, if that's information you want us to bring back, we can.
To me, one of the important things here is going to be, what is the question that we're actually asking the consulting firm? Because, you know, is it something such as, please go take a look at Metro's work and, and decide if there's anything that they didn't catch, which in some shape and form is, is probably an overlay to what KPG has done? Another question would be, you know, understanding what the priorities are of this community. Is there another way that Sound Transit, Metro could go about configuring this? Which I imagine is a much bigger question and probably much more expensive and time-consuming So, council?
Well, I mean, I don't think we have enough information from Metro really with projections and justifications for routing and volumes. They're just, Metro just wants to honestly keep their options as wide open as they can, and that's why they're pushing us to land on the optimal configuration right now. They don't have the data that says they need that. And so I don't know what we would hire a consultant to do.
Benson?
Yeah, I think my focus would be more narrow than that. I mean, again, if, my premise or we would start with, is there a way that all the passengers can be let off on the south side of North Mercer Way? And yet satisfy the operational needs of Metro? Which is basically, again, the layover requirements that they profess that they need, and obviously they do need it because of the union contracts and what have you. But I think that's a more narrow question, and that's something that somebody could hopefully do in an analysis.
Yeah, and I, I second that. I, I have a lot of thoughts about that. Union agreement, the operational requirement of where in that circuitous route they, they spend their mandatory union hold break period. And I also would like to see some modeling of that traffic signal based on what we're, what we're kind of contemplating these volumes to be, pedestrian crossing. Because we have all the data and we have the intersection, we should be able to model what it would look like, but I think that's a model that is probably constructive. And then the safety issue. Is it really a safe mode of operation? Has every kind of contingency related to safety been, been considered?
Well, and I would add on that, like I said, we need information about the very basics of how do people further out on the east side get to Bellevue? Because that plays a big factor in terms of the volumes that we're going to experience here and what makes sense to do on Mercer Island.
So council, we're at 7:06 at this point. This is important stuff, so I'm, I'm, you know, I'm comfortable if people want to continue to hash through this. The alternative is, I think, would be for me, maybe myself and the, the deputy mayor to work with Kirsten and Julie and put a proposal forward to council in terms of how we move this forward and, and potentially even have a framework to discuss next week because we do have a council meeting next week.
Can you remind me what the timeline is to get this kind of landed with construction schedules and?
I, Kirsten, do you have that?
Sound Transit has told us. Sound Transit has told us, um, you know, they, they feel like we are, um, or they are late on their schedule. I think, um, they're, they have expressed to us as staff some anxiety about this process going on, um, for a length of time. I think that their priority would be to get to a decision, um, so that they can continue constructing the light rail, um, you know, the, the station and the surroundings because they, you know, they do want to be able to have all of the supporting infrastructure in place when the light rail station opens. So I think that's, that's the timing consideration, um, so.
But they haven't said we need a decision by June 15th, or?
Well, they, they said we need a decision by March. You know, first quarter of 2019 was, was within their timeline, so this is beyond that.
Okay. Um, council? Are you comfortable if the deputy mayor and myself work with the city manager and Kirsten to come up with some ideas about how we can work our way through this? And we hopefully have, what is it, a short agenda item next week? Julie, you're shaking your head no.
No, you, your, your may meetings are packed.
Well, but I mean, we might need to add something next week if it's sim, not, not to debate the whole package, but how we go about getting council comfortable with an option.
So, could I suggest you include Lisa to kind of bring her along and bring her up to speed? So if the three of you could figure it out, I think that would help expedite things.
Okay, council, any concerns?
We're in agreement. We are not clear, but.
Wendy says include Lisa because she's behind the eight ball and doesn't have all the history.
Just repeat it.
I'm okay with it.
No.
I think what she's saying is, if, if, you know, what I had suggested is that myself and the deputy mayor work with the city manager and the project manager, and I think what Wendy's saying is include Lisa in that so that it provides also the opportunity to get all those, you know, extra little pieces of information, A, that she generally wants, but also come with having some history with the negotiations.
Did I not make that clear?
I'm, I just didn't hear it.
It was totally clear to me.
I thought so too.
All right, I'm here, I'm here. I'm going to take consensus unless anybody argues at this point, meaning that that's a path forward that we'll look at. And again, I would emphasize, next week would be about landing a process forward based on recommendations that the three of us plus city staff would try to generate.
So you're coming up with a, a scope, a purpose? I mean.
I, it, yeah, somehow, somewhere. I can't tell you exactly what we're going to do because otherwise I'd tell you tonight.
I understand that, but obviously, in the discussion that we've had, we have broad purpose, broad scope. We've had a more limited scope, so that's something that.
I would encourage all council members to email and let us know what you require in that process so that we make sure that we get it answered.
Got it.
I, I think you have an impossible task. I mean, your, your, your scope ranges from Benson's, how do we drop passengers on the south side, to Lisa's. I want to understand the entire metro, uh, operation, uh, for the east side. And that's a bit of a, you know, the frying pan in the universe kind of.
It is, but I would say council next week is going to also have to recognize whether or not they want to try to go to the frying pan or the universe. I don't, I'm, I'm not sensing that that's a place where we can land tonight. Okay, seeing cheerful, happy faces up here, feeling highly satisfied about that conversation. Um, we now move on to the rest of our agenda. And the rest of our agenda starts with appearances. So as most people know by now, this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the city council on any item. We do ask that you sign up, um, line up, speak audibly into the podium microphone, state your name, and if you so choose, city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. I think everybody at this point knows the basic rules, which are Be Civil, and the detailed rules are on the back door. I think we're going to just give three minutes to get the tables down. Please, yes, but don't leave chambers because I don't want to have to choose to go down. Okay. Deb, I think we're, we're probably getting ready to go. I think we're about ready for public appearances at this point. Do we have a sign-up sheet tonight, or are we just queuing?
Mayor, I have a Jackie Dunbar and then another name. I'm sorry, I can't read it.
Okay, well, anybody who does wish to speak tonight, public appearances, please do, do queue up and we'll, we'll give you that three minutes. So welcome.
Thank you. Um, my name is Jackie Dunbar and I live at 711682nd Avenue, southeast Mercer Island. I was very happy to read the city has a budget, a budget surplus, and all of the budget surplus should be kept in the reserve fund in case it is needed for a city emergency or may even be needed in the future to balance the budget. That's my suggestion. The only expense I would encourage is to hire lifeguards at the Mercer Island parks that allow swimming. Many children and adults use these parks, and the park should be as safe as possible. Anytime surplus funds are announced, I know there will be a demand for them, and I'm sure all of the causes are very good. But the prudent thing for the city to do is to keep these funds in reserve for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We had someone else sign up? Maybe Tom, maybe not. Welcome.
It was me. I didn't, my spelling, or I hope I spelled my name right, but it probably wasn't very clear. Um, good to see you all. Thank you all for your service, and especially Lisa, thank you. I really appreciate you filling in for me, or taking over for me.
Very hot seat.
Yeah, it, it can be. It can be. I just wanted to talk tonight about the school counselors. I know last year I made a run at it and tried to get a counselor-only levy, and as I understand it, the city manager's, um, working, uh, behind the scenes to try and push a counselor-only levy. At this point in time, I can't support it. I would, I would much rather see the city council, um, make this a community value and a community priority and line item into the budget. Um, I, I think there's a ton of opportunity there. It's something the kids need, um, and, and I know that when we were first working on it, uh, last summer, um, you saw how many people in the community care about it. So, um, that is the, the one thing that I, I really came here to talk about tonight, and I do appreciate the position that you're in with all of the budget, but I, I went through some of the numbers and I wouldn't be surprised if that, um, initial number of 200,000 grows significantly with, um, some further analytics. So, um, use, I, well, I understand where Jackie Dunbar's coming from, um, you may be able to use some of it for the counselors. Um, and then the other part of this equation is that, um, I would support a Parks and Pipes type levy. I think that's where the residents and the constituency could really understand, having been on the inside and the outside now, um, where we could earmark the funds directly to replacing docks at Luther or those types of activities as well as some of the infrastructure needs. And then finally, that, I wasn't going to talk about this at all, but, um, the last presentation, I thank you, Mayor Burtland for, and, uh, council member Andrell and Saleem and Benson for your questions and pushing back and, and looking at the, uh, process further before moving forward. That is a high-impact area, and I think more work needs to be done there. Um, in regard to hiring a, a consultant to, uh, do some more analytics, I, I think we need creative solutions to the budget right now, and we have some amazing technical engineers from Amazon who focus in logistics, and it's a basic math problem. So when deputy mayor Nice brought up modeling, there are tons of modeling tools out there that can help you get to the answer that you need without spending additional funds on consultant dollars. So, it's really nice to see you all. I haven't seen you much, uh, although I saw, uh, mayor at the store the other day, but it is good to see you, and thank you again for all your service.
Thank you.
Ira Appleman, Mercer Island. Uh, I've been asking for about 10 years now why we need a mental health counselor in every school, every second of every day, and I never get an answer. I favor having mental health counselors because when I graduated from Mercer Island High School in 1969, we didn't have a mental health counselor, and I believe some students got lost who could have used some help. However, the mental health counseling program is way out of financial control and one of the best examples of Parkinson's Law, that work will expand to consume all available resources. The Youth and Family Services Agenda Bill 5553 that we're considering next tonight is very deceptive. Though mental health counseling is the main reason for this agenda item, and it's filled with facts and a timeline, it fails to mention that about 10 years ago, the city was paying about 60% for the mental health counselors, and the school district was paying 40%. The school district announced they would no longer pay anything for mental health counseling and demanded the city, uh, pay 100%. I was in these chambers, as I have been for the last 23 years, and I objected. I informed the city council what it already knew. Taking over 100% of the program would bankrupt the YFS fund, which is what happened. This is only one of many politically different budget decisions that the city has made over the years, expecting that they can always increase island taxes to bail the city out. I'm sure if there is a good reason why we need a mental health counselor in every school, every second of every day, that reason would have been given by now. Two elementary schools should share a mental health counselor, uh, Northwood and West Mercer and Island Crest and Lakridge. If the council, if the counselor is in one school when there's a problem at the second school, the schools are close enough that the counselor can easily be at the second school in minutes. The vote on Proposition 1 showed that the voters are finally demanding that this city council at least begin to be responsible with public funds. And another question is why we haven't been recovering, uh, funds from private insurance, uh, for the counseling that we do.
Thank you. Next? Welcome.
Thank you. Gary Robinson, likewise Mercer Island, for 40 years. You know, I watched the first part of the session tonight on TV, and you know, it really is great that you make that, uh, option available to us. And I'm sure that there are a lot of you out there, uh, that are watching now, and I just want to make two brief comments. One is to associate myself with what I perceive to be your misgivings about the way that things are going with Sound Transit and what's going to happen to Mercer Island here with all the things that were discussed in the preceding hour. The second point I'd like to make is that Mercer Island needs a plan. Concurrent with your suggestion, uh, Mayor Debbie, that we have a meeting and that we try to figure out ourselves what it is we want to do, I think we need a very proactive plan saying, this is what we want to happen on Mercer Island, and that we ought to seek the means and the resources to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for appearances? Going once, going twice? Okay, thank you. Appearances is now closed. We now move on to, um, special business, which is Agenda Bill 5553. It is the Youth and Family Services or the YFS Department Funding History and Proposed Budget Adjustments to the 2019-2020 YFS Fund Budget. For that, we welcome Family Services Director Cindy Goodwin.
Mayor, if I could, um, I just want to state that I have not attended any of the Mercer Island Coalition meetings with the exception of one meeting last week. Um, I've never been discussing a school counselor levy. I always felt that should be community-driven, so I was a little surprised by the comments tonight, and I want to go on record as saying that was a surprise to me. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Tonight I'm here to speak with you about Agenda Bill 5553, Youth and Family Services, Department Funding History and the Proposed Budget Adjustments for this coming biennium, 2019 and 2020. There's a couple of thrusts to this agenda bill, and the first is to really go over the mechanisms of funding for the Department of Youth and Family Services, um, talk about the constraints, talk about how we put together a budget, and look at its funding challenges and, and the fluctuating nature of, of the components that make up our budget. And then the second is to take a look at the recommendations for, um, funding the department in 19 and 20. Um, and I'm doing this, I want to do the first part of the, this presentation because at this time in history, so much of Youth and Family Services and really anything in this city is getting just a lot of scrutiny, especially if it has to do with revenue generation, and it should. We, you know, we're in challenging times, and, um, I think that everybody just wants to make sure we're maximizing every revenue potential that we have and any kind of, that we're stewarding donations. So, um, in doing so and for future conversations, especially as the, the department looks at maximizing and changing its funding, uh, model somewhat at Thrishop, I just really want to make sure that we're all on the same page in doing that because I think that we can have very fruitful discussions, and I really want to make sure that I can take into consideration any suggestions that come my way from you, and there were some good ones. So, we'll do that, and then we'll go on to the budgeting adjustments. So I want to start with, um, the Youth and Family Services history and background. Youth and Family Services, um, I think many of you know, began as a youth service bureau. It was a city project. It started in 1973 when King County made funding available to, uh, to entities, and they were usually run by city or nonprofits, and they followed school district lines. Um, we have a public-private partnership, which means that we get public funds, we get donations, we have, we have family foundations, we have service fees. And it began as a project in 1973, but in 1976 it became a city department. And the, the idea behind that was, is that we didn't qualify for United Way, and it was clear that we wouldn't qualify for other sorts of funding too that were public funding. Um, and the hope at beginning the youth service bureaus was that groups like, um, a city or a nonprofit would leverage these funds, go out and bring in other monies, take a look at what their community needs, and they would be, they would build a social service organization for that community. So that's how we began. Our, um, we have our service overview up there. It looks quite a bit different than it did when it began in 73 when it did runaway services and foster care for youth on the island. It's really different. It's gone through a number of reiterations. Everything has grown organically as needs come up and as we, as they've done different kinds of assessments. I'm going to spend just a bit of talking about the history of the general fund and taking a look at what it is today. This chart right here is from this year, 2019. And the general fund up until about, um, 2004 paid And the general fund, up until about 2004, paid 60% of YFS funding. And the remaining 40%, it was understood that that came through different mechanisms that the department was responsible for. So it was a thrift shop, it was grants, it was our service fees. And there have been many smaller grants over the course of the past 35 years. There are King County grants, there are federal grants, and they're usually for specific services, and they last for a period of time. But that was the other 40%. And if you look at Page 2, you can see that there are year transfers of what the city has provided to the department. The general fund has always been a part of YFS. It's understood that to have a service like this, it takes more than what you're able to raise. So it's been a part of the city since then. The revenues have fluxed. In 2004, the amount of money that was given to YFS was capped at 465. It was reduced during years where there was better growth at the thrift shop. So we've been fortunate in the sense that there's been a percentage, then a capped amount, and then flexibility. And as you can see from the table on Page 2, there's the amount that they've given us, the capped amount, the flat amount. And then when it was needed, they were also able to put in some. And if you take a look at our configuration, the biggest part by far right now is the thrift shop. And close behind that is the general fund support and the Youth and Family Services Foundation. And what falls out of that is federal, state, and local fees, beginning fund balance. If we don't spend all of something in one line, that can be carried over. The Mercer Island School District does 60%. I do want to say that they, I think it was referenced in one of the comments, that it was, they did at one time pay close to half of the counselors. And when they went through a difficult time in 2008, when a lot of us did and weren't able to make funding, they let us know that they could no longer do that. So if you, that's not a piece of your history. I want to let you know that that was one of the larger funding sources that we lost and really plays a role into how we've tried to cover that since then. So, and as you can see. Yeah.
Just to clarify, you said the school district pays 60%. And of course--
They paid about 40, I'm sorry, of the school counselors.
This shows that they pay about 2% of the total cost of the thrift shop. And I just want to make sure that you're--
60,000, I'm sorry. Did I say 60%?
You did say 60%. I just wanted to allow you--
Sorry, flat rate, 60,000. They used to pay 40%. Thank you very much for doing that. So that's what we look like. That's our configuration of services and kind of the history of how the general fund has always been a part of that. And that, I just want to say, that's very similar to other cities, where they might not give it to a department that does the services, but they might have grants that they give out to multiple organizations who provide those services to citizens in their community. And there is a per capita, there's been a comparison of cities, and we probably fall somewhat in the middle. It really depends, and I'm not sure what that is now. You know, with the potential elimination of the general fund, we would be on the very low end of that. And that's not to say that we don't provide good services to our community. It's just to say what a city does to support the human services. So there's two, the larger entities that are part of our funding configuration other than the historical general fund are the thrift shop and the foundation. I'm going to spend some time on those because I think that's important, especially as we go forward in the coming years, that we all have an understanding of how this works. I'll talk about the business practices, the volunteers and the work-study because these have really played a big role. And the two major parts of the thrift shop growth have really been kind of a move to business practices and then a transition to paid staff. So the thrift shop, I think as most of you know, was a garage sale in someone's garage in 1975. From there, it went to one room in a building, one room in a school. And then I think, I believe it was in the '90s, it moved to where it currently is at Mercer Dale, which was an old clubhouse with pools and went through a remodel. It doubled in space. It has, right now, it has approximately 3,600 square feet of space. And we do everything that we can to maximize that space and what we get from it. It is staff-driven at this time, but it began being volunteer-driven. It was all volunteers. We still have a lot of volunteer support. But at the time when they began, you know, there were people that gave 30 to 40 hours a week. So it was really a different, it was a different ballgame, and it was a different time. We have a lot of connections to the community, and we provide not just a business, but we have a social service endeavor to this as well. So we have connections, and we have placements for Mercer Island Special Education Students, Northwest Center, At Work, which is job placement. People come there to do community service. We have job coaches that bring people there. It's a place for you to recycle your goods. It's a place to be a community and be involved and give back in a meaningful way. And for many people, it's been a way that as you age and have cognitive decline, that we can keep you and keep you engaged. So I'm bringing these up because it is our largest, it's our largest funding source, but it's also more than that. It is, it's something, we take that into consideration in all of our decisions, which is different than just a business. So you have other focus that you need to make sure that you focus on because the bottom line is very important. But that aspect of the thrift shop is really a very important part about why people give to us and the community. The revenues, as you see, the retail space is 3,600 square feet. What I'm showing here is, and this is since we've started to keep track of certain information, this was the most helpful, I think, to show the revenue and expenses. And the expense line is a thin line going through. Sorry, the revenue is the bars, and the expenses is going through this. What we did was we put in percentages there. So you could see as we've made choices and made staffing changes, how we've increased revenues. And what we really focus on is net revenues. Whenever we make a staffing change, we're going to have more, certainly more costs in certain ways. But what we really pay attention to is ensuring that we can see a net revenue and that it's worth it to shift to a paid staffing model.
I think, you know, there is that the expenses are less than 50%. So, and it's pretty good profit margin, if you will, I think.
It's the highest of all the thrift shops we know. We're very fortunate for that, yeah. So I just want to talk a minute about thrift shop practices because these have really changed over the years. We had our first thrift shop coordinator come on in 1996, and then we had our current business person come on in 2000. And since then, that's really been the majority of the growth of the thrift shop. There are a number of business practices that we do, and it's grown steadily. We have gone to look at, we keep in touch with all of thrift shops. Suzanne Faleen, the thrift shop coordinator, did a trip to Oregon, the St. Vincent de Paul there, because they're really the standard for how to use donations and how to use any kind of good that comes your way so that we could look at, how can we sell goods? What options are out there to do recycling? How could we take, given our footprint, how could we really model making the most revenues from what came our way? We stay in touch with other thrift shops. We look at mom-and-pop thrift shops, we look at Goodwill. We have strong relationships. We do a lot networking. But we do this because we want to share expertise. And we've moved from that mom-and-pop to really a quite established boutique thrift shop. There's a couple ways that we did that. We did a lot of streamlining. We look at inputs, throughputs, and outputs. As things come in, what are they? Are you counting them? How many touches are there before you can get them to the floor? We have a POS system that monitors and can help us develop reports. So reports with the number of items sold, the average price. And it allows us to look at where things are selling, what kind of resources they take. And then having the staff look at that every Monday and saying, "Okay, how are we doing? Do we need to move things around?" So it helps us to really make time-sensitive decisions and use our resources best. We've also done fixture upgrades, looking at the layout. How can we make sure that the store is the most attractive for merchandising and a good experience for the consumer? And then really using as many sales reports as we can to encourage staff and volunteers to stay mission-driven. And people look at, and every Monday, we put back on how, we report back on how well people have done so they can, I guess, take pride in that and really join us. I think on Page 5, I also included in the agenda bill a list of other organizations that we work with. We can sell in the store. We sell some things online. We put things on Seattle Craigslist. But we also do OfferUp, Usel for cellphones and tablets, Amazon for books and other new items that come in, and then luxury clothing and handbags through ReelReel. And all of these things have really added to our bottom line and our ability to use anything that comes our ways and max, and really be a good steward of a donation. If something won't sell in the store, there's an audience out there somewhere for it. So we also have a number of community partnerships that help us with our in-store operations, gleaning groups that will come through so that at the end of the month, tags are colored, and they can go through, take out what has sat there too long, that's taking up shelf space, and then go on to other nonprofits. So in many ways, we're just maximizing any kind of connection that we can. And if we can get money for it, great. If not, we want to make sure it goes to someplace else where somebody else can use it. Just for a minute, this is just a picture of outside sales. And the reason for me that I put it in here was just that you can see this is one of the reports that we look at at the end of the year to see where we're doing. This does not look the same for each of it. This is a slide of a picture. But you could look at each year, and you can see how the pie chart changes. So this year, Goodwill bulk is the highest one. ReelReel is the next highest one. Cars was the blue, the light blue. And then Amazon is the small sliver. And then Goodwill's consignment is very small between the bulk, between the two big ones. But that doesn't look the same for the past four years. We used to do more consignment. Or we change, we change how we're doing things. We change, something will happen with car sales. So this is just an indicator for 2018, how our outside sales with other partnerships and other businesses work for us. Going to shift a bit to volunteerism. The thrift shop growth is a big part of how we run, how Suzanne and her crew run it as a business. And then the two, you know, factors that really play a big role in that are volunteers and work-study students. I'm going to speak a bit about them. Original volunteers, as I said, did 20 to 40 hours a week. Right now, with national trends, volunteerism is decreasing, and so is the amount of time that they give. And what I've included here, and it's on Page 6 of your agenda bill, is by year from 2009, you can see how many volunteers we have, which goes up. The hours is going down, and the number of hours that people provide is going down as well. And I want to take a minute here because we recruit in every way that we have found possible to recruit. We have gone through the schools, we've gone through the faith communities. We go to fairs. We pay attention to how other people recruit volunteers. We have great volunteers. We just don't have the same, the face of volunteers is very different. Like I said, it's decreasing. They're doing fewer hours. And many of the people that are living well into their retirement years go travel, or they take off to take care of somebody, or they go do something fun, or many things, just very, very active seniors. It's very different than the people that dedicated huge chunks of time. It's a different time in history. So I want to show that. And then the bar chart just shows the number of volunteer hours as well. So we have volunteers. I want to talk about the staffing history as it relates to work-study and partially just casual labor. And so I just want to point your attention to this bar chart. The bar chart is really how many work-study students we've had over the year. And the paid staffing is the dark on top, when we've added them in, when they've come into the shop. And if you take a look at the year, you can see the number of work-study employees we've had, and the highs were in 2017 and '18, really during the recession. This was a great help. There were a lot of work-study funds available on state and national level. And the decreases really came afterwards. The decreases really started hitting us in about '13 and '14. It used to be that work-study funds on the federal level paid, they reimbursed us 90%. On the state level, it was 70% of reimbursements. And so you had students who had, there were more students with awards, and the students had higher awards. Now, the awards are lower, there are fewer, and the reimbursement rate is 60 and 70% respectively. So the whole work-study staffing picture looks quite a bit different than it did when we began using them. They are still, we will take any work-study student. And I literally mean that. A lot of them are first-year colleges. They may never have worked, but we can train them. And we're willing to do that because it's really a good trade-off. They like it. A lot of our volunteers like them. And it's a great source of labor. We're just really not getting enough. And I think if you can look at 2019, I believe we have three. And I believe they were doing one or two shifts a week, and it depends. I want to say something about this pool. A lot of them can be very enthusiastic. They also leave on vacations. They take time off if they get sick. There's too much snow. They have a final that they didn't prepare for. They pulled an all-nighter. I mean, there are many reasons why that's not, we appreciate it. We appreciate how much we get reimbursed, but it's not stable enough, and it is inconsistent. So it comes with a kind of a downside to it as well. So at this time in history, I would say in the past few times that I've been up here, I've really been talking about the transition of how our funding is going. Although thrift shop revenues are still going up, we're facing something different than we have in the past. And we're really having this transition to paid staff. And we do this for a reason. It's a reduction in funds, it's the fact that they're not there. But it's also just for having a reliable work pool. When you have people that are paid, they're really accountable. And they really need to perform, or they can be like, oh, they get evaluated. We can count on them doing it. They're reliable. And we began to see, when we looked at weekly and monthly reports, that there was a direct correlation with a decrease in volunteers or work-study students not coming in and our revenues going down. It was very easy to see the correlation. So over the past few years, we've been shifting. Especially with work-study students and even casual labor. So I want to say that there are other forces at play. It's not just the reimbursement rate. It's that in Seattle and other areas, the minimum wage has gone up so much that it's hard for us to compete with it sometimes, or they don't want to come on the island. You know, the market's doing really well. You can get jobs everywhere right now. It's really, people are fighting out there for entry-level people in the restaurant business and thrift business. It's difficult. So we've been transitioning to a more stable environment because it's clear that our revenues increase as that goes up. The second piece of this that I really want to take a few minutes to focus on is the foundation. The foundation is another, about 12% of our funding this year. And it's been a source of funding that's been growing over the past, in particular, five to six years. The foundation began about 30 years ago. It's had its 30th celebration. At first, it had one to three members. It was developed to accept funds only. It wrote a letter campaign. It began with a letter campaign. But it was really there to accept monies because people could designate United Way, and we could take it. Or there were many, many smaller foundations that wanted a 501(c) organization to accept it. So it was a small group. The bylaws were quite brief. And it was one to three members, and that's what they did. And it went along like this. When I came on in 2002, there were a few things that I asked during the interview process. You know, "What are the next steps for you as a city with social services? What do you need? What are you looking at? And then as far as funding, what are some of the challenges or what do you see coming up?" And I was told that the 60-40 split most likely would not continue, and that funds would be capped, and that we needed to look at other ways for raising funds. So in 2002, I asked around the community, tried to introduce myself to people who knew the foundation, and was introduced to Teri Potmeyer. She was one of the names that was given. So Teri Potmeyer actually reinvigorated the board. There's one person, when I came on, there's one person, and she actually wanted to roll off, so we needed to recruit people. And Teri didn't want to join it. She couldn't make a commitment because of what she was doing, but she said she would get a board up and going for me. So we spent time, we brought people on. She helped them redo the bylaws that we needed to grow it so it could go up, the board could be up to 15 members. And then she, the first breakfast was in 2003 because she said, "We're bringing all these people on, and you need to have something for them to do." And so we need a signature event. If you're going to raise more money, you have to have something to do around. That really began the breakfast, and that really began a larger foundation. And their first tasks were branding and raising awareness. So there was a contest at the high school to develop a logo. We gave them some outlines of what we'd like. A young girl, $100, developed the first logo back in, I think it was 2004. We've gone through, I think we've had another reiteration of the logo since then. But basically, it became 15 board members, and they really had the charge of developing fundraising that would add significantly to our bottom line. And that was our goal, was to raise it at that time. They grew appeals. They really got out there and raised the awareness. They compared themselves to the school foundation. They wanted people to know that we'd like you to give locally, that it's islanders, that are going to support islanders, and that there are people on the island that give funds to many organizations and that we would like to be one of them. So that was the work that was begun quite a while ago. We hired our first development director in 2008. And that was really to reach out and develop community partnerships. We have a lot of partnerships with breakfasts. And you know that if you've been to the breakfast or you see, there's many, Yoga Bliss does a lot of things for it. There are many businesses out there that are very, very generous to us and do a lot of small fundraisers. And that continued to grow.[1750.56] fundraisers. And that, that continued to grow. And in 2013, we hired our current fundraiser, Sari Weiss, who really came with a professional background and has really whipped up the foundation, and has really increased the, the revenues for the foundation. I have included in your, in your packet, there's a, there is a quick, it's up here too, it's just the fundraising effort that talks about our different endeavors. So you can see that the breakfast appeal has grown, the school counselor and the year-end counseling letter have both grown, small fundraisers within the community have grown, and major donors. It looks like there's, there's been a lot of growth there because it started from nothing, so it's easy to see that it's really grown, grown 400%. But we really have, this board takes this plant, does strategic planning yearly. They are committed to, they are committed to providing a, a portion of the budget, I like to say that they provide 10% of the budget, as well as projects for the department. So they did the pilot project to increase the revenue, to increase a position at thrift shops. So we could see if we did this transition to a paid staffing model, would it pay off in net revenues? So, so these are some of the increases that they have done. On page seven of your agenda, I think we say how much they've given each year to the department, as well as the, the projects that they funded fan replacement, thrift shop employee, snacks for kids in schools, islander middle school counselor, community needs assessment, the high achieving school survey this year that will help us with really determining how to do our prevention programs. And as you can see, the amount given to the city each year has increased, as has the projects. And this year, the commitment to the city is $500,000, and next year will be $510,000. So they are a very committed board that has, has really grown in their fundraising and contributed greatly. They, it's not just about fundraising for them, it's really about getting people invested and in their community, and making sure that all of us are healthy. And they are great ambassadors. They speak that, they recruit people from that, and they've been some of the people that are looking at solutions for long-term funding. So this has been another part of our endeavor. So I'm going to shift now to talk about the second part. And I, I want to just kind of end that part of the agenda bill and talk that, and add that, you know, we have a lot of moving parts to the YFS department. And we get, we get grants. We've applied for three, we received one recently this year, we're waiting to hear in another two. Grants are time limited, so you'll, you will get them, but they're, they can't supplant funds. They expect that you will continue the work as, that part of writing the grant is how will you continue the good work that you do. So they're not undesigned funding sources. We, the two, the, both the foundation and the thrift shop are really susceptible to economic recession and effects. Foundation donations go down. We saw thrift shop donations go down in the recession. For a while, people weren't shopping there as much, then we saw an increase during the recession. There are many factors over which we have no control, some like work-study reductions that came suddenly, volunteer trends, public trust. And right now in our, in our whole, in our country, there's a lack of trust in, in public entities, and we feel that. We feel rumors. If somebody has a bad experience with a staff, somebody has a bad experience with volunteers, something, you know, we have to pay attention to that because it's, we want to keep the public trust. So we have to put a lot of endeavor, a lot of effort into things like this, and there's a lot of things over which we don't necessarily have control. And I say that just because it's important to keep that in mind as you take a look at how we fund our department. Some things we can grow, they're not going to grow as much to be a stable, to be the stable source if we lose, you know, if we think about what are we going to do when we have, we no longer have the, any general fund subsidy. So I do want to thank Marie Condo because her Netflix series has really, really brought in donations. We are inundated with donations and good donations. I want to thank the public on that. The second part of this agenda bill is taking a look at the 2020 and the 2019. Let's see, did I move one? Yep. Oh, there we go. Thank you. I want to talk about our proposed, well, the reductions to the department and just some changes over the past few days about how we can think about refunding these. So in the first round of reductions for 2018-19, we were building our budget last year. We, we reduced administrative support to halftime, geriatric specialist to halftime, and two elementary school counselors. One would be eliminated in 2019, and one would be eliminated in 2020. And what I have up here is the administrative person in the two elementary school counselors because the, the geriatric specialist has generously been funded by the, the foundation. So these total reductions are 173, 640. And this year, we've been, we've recently found out that we have some salary savings, and we have that because we had a few positions open that we were unable to fund. When the budget, when we were uncertain about the budget, we were not getting applicants to apply for things because we couldn't say this is going to go on. So there were things that were left open for quite a while. So that has allowed us to have some of these savings that we can carry over. So we would like to use the savings, those savings added up, I believe are about 170. And the reductions total 173. So we will have 640 remains. So we would like to use those funds to backfill for the elementary school counselors.
Are these papers?
Yeah, you know what, these actually look...
They're not the same as what's in my printed...
No, and these, I have to tell you, this is, I'm going to switch to this because I think that maybe we made a...
This has been amended since the printed packet, actually.
But this was placed on my desk tonight.
And this is, this is different than I have...
Oh, it should match your PowerPoint. Mine does.
Why does mine say 185 in my...
Yeah.
Oh, it's on the...
Oh, my, I'm...
Sorry, I missed very much a lot. I like the next page. It's the same format, so. Okay, let me see.
So that's for the first year. I have something a little different. I'm sorry, I think that we, we had a lot of going back and forth over the past couple of days. So 170 is the savings. And then this year, for 2020, we reduced, and I'll go over that in the next page, an administrator coordinator salary, and she left early because she knew that her job would end and not be funded from 1120. So she left early, and we have eight months of that salary saving, which is a 65. So together with the savings from last year, and salary savings, and this year the administrative coordinator savings, we have 235, which is going to leave us with, if we restore, if we pay for the positions, we need 173, 640, and we would have 61, 360 to carry over to the next year. So that's what we're requesting to do.
To carry over to the next year, to carry over...
To 2020.
To 2020?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And I want to spend some time on 2020 because 2020 is a little more confusing, a little more involved. And you can see we've crossed out some things because we've, because with the carryover and, I'm just going to go through what we're going to do, and I'm going to go over what we'd like to do now. For making up this year, we'd like to, we proposed doing a community-based counseling fee. We've updated that. We update that regularly. So even though that's a new revenue source, we do that, we do that regularly, and we just updated recently. So we are hoping that we will have enough data to judge whether that will be $15,000 a year. There's next to propose school counseling fees at IMS in the elementary schools. The total is 109, 54 and 55, and I'm going to get into that in the next page. So I just want, those are placeholders for increasing revenues that way. Then along with the carryover, we would have a total revenues of 185, 360. And then there are some reductions as well that go along with that. The administrative coordinator would be cut for 2020. We're eliminating pay-for-performance, which is 63, 834. And we need to add somebody back in, which is an expense. And that is, if we're going to reduce the administrative coordinator, we need to have a full-time admin person. That person had been put down to halftime. So we're adding back in 33, 8 at that. So the total expenditure reductions is 129, 984, and total revenues is 185, 360. And what we needed to come to was 309. So that's how we're, we are thinking about making it through 2020 with these...
So in other words, the 309 is, represents...
The, the, so when, I'm sorry, I should have prefaced it. In the, in the December 4th meeting, there was a direction to cut further 1.2 million. And so of that, YFS would need to cut 309,000. And that was basically the elimination of the YFS, the general fund subsidy to YFS. Excuse me, I should have added that first. And then we'll talk for a minute about the school counseling fees pilot project. And I want to make a distinction here. We did put in $109,000 to do these revenues, and I want to talk about how we got to that, and I want to talk about how we would do that. And then I also want to talk to you, it's an administrative decision, it's not a clinical decision. So I want to talk a bit about that, just so we can have, we can think about that, or at least you'd have that in thinking about this proposal. So what we, what we're considering is that the high school and middle school, three staff, three sessions a day, and we've estimated out here what we think we could do conservatively, $54,000. We would begin with two elementary school staff and move to four, and that would be three to four sessions a day. We say three to four because with all the things that can happen, you would need to schedule four, hoping that you could, three would actually happen. There are so many things that could happen in the school setting. In looking at this, and this is new for us, this is not something that's been done. And when we looked at other school counseling models, this has not been done elsewhere either. So this is, this is new. So what we're thinking of doing is that they would shift, they would definitely shift from a milieu-based counselor. Right now you have, you have counselors in the school, and you have one in each school, which is really the gold standard of mental health in schools because that's where kids access service. And in particular, right now in our country, we have so, we have so much increasing anxiety, depression, any disorders, and kids feel that they trust the people in their schools more. That's why we put them in the schools, and that's why the model is, is here, and why it's pretty much a lauded, a lauded model of provision for mental health. They would shift from being the person of a milieu therapist to somebody who closes their door part-time. And a milieu therapist is somebody who really monitors the environment in which we're all growing. So they attend a crisis, as they come up. They deal with, they help the people around the youth be the best they can be to get effective behavior change, or to get an effective environment for everybody to grow, to learn. And our, our goal by being in the schools is to attend to social, emotional, and mental health needs so that they can get back into the academic environment, because that's what you want in a school. And if you've ever had a fender bender or anything happen to you on the way to work, and you can't think, and your mind is full, that's what kids deal with when something's going wrong. And that's why you want to attend to it then, because they can't think, they can't learn, they can't participate. And when they're little and their language is, is, is play and action, they're going to act out. So everyone's going to benefit if we can get these kids settled down. So that's how we looked at it. The, they would shift, it would be a fee for service, sliding fee like we do in community-based services. The session length would vary by school. And we think that we would probably do administrative, administration somewhere, we'd figure out how to mail and collect the fee. So this is new for us, this would need to be worked out. And again, we're starting it this year, so we'd have some sort of, sort of pilot project to it. And the eligibility would be students who need one-to-one psychotherapy services. That's just regular counseling, and that is not kids who drop in, not kids who are doing friendship groups, not, not classroom-based work, the milieu work. It's really the kid that you might refer out, or you might be doing now once in a while, and you know they need more therapy, and so you, you do it now for free. But those are the kids that we're going to try to capture.
Okay.
A quick, quick question, Cindy, if you don't mind, a brief interruption.
Yeah, no.
What's your degree of certainty that you can hit that revenue projection?
Yeah, you know, it's an estimate. It's really an estimate. We think that that's, we, we know the need is there for that, and if we didn't refer out, we think we could get that. Our, the challenges, and I'm going to talk about the challenges, is that will, will parents choose to do that if they have to focus on paying in the school? We're going to have, hmm, I'm sorry, guys, I keep thinking twice. Oh, I'm sorry, that's me. So that's one of our challenges. Our concerns are that... Sure. Here we go. Sorry, guys. It's a long agenda bill. Our concern is that we're going to see if your children, we're not sure that we're going to get that. We really tried to, this is a guesstimate. So it's our best guess of what we think we could do, but there are some unknowns. Will this reduce the amount of kids come in? You know, parents, parents in affluent communities are less likely to get help for their kids than other communities. I mean, that's kind of, that's known in the literature. We hope that this would not be a deterrent. A lot of parents do get help for their kids, we're hoping that would be the case. When kids turn 13, they can seek mental health services on their own, and if they don't want to share it with their parents, we couldn't use a sliding fee, it would just be a dollar. Most, most teens don't have an income. So there are many, there are many unknowns that we're concerned about. It would, we're concerned about the no-show rate. You know, if you have snow days, if you have sick days, a flu hits the school. So there are a number of things we have, like I said, it's a guesstimate. And I want to say that, I had referenced that it's an administrative decision and not a clinical decision. What that means is that the only reason why we're recommending this, the only reason why we're recommending this, is that we didn't want to cut staff. We have no other option. It was either cut staff or do this. And so in our mind, it was worth doing this type of project. Would we recommend it clinically? You know, never, never, if we didn't have to do this. But, but that's, it's a, it's a point-in-time decision when, what's the lesser of two evils? We'd like to keep them there. And so we would give it a, we'd give it a try. Whether we'll make it or not, we don't know. And if this goes through, you know, we might see reductions in the future. But there are, there are those concerns. Yeah. And there are, there are unknowns.
Okay, I'm, Council, I'm, I'd like, let's get Cindy to, unless it's a clarification question, let's get through the presentation. I think we all have a bunch of questions stacking up.
Yeah. I just want to finish, I think another one of our concerns, just clinically, is that the, you know, this is, when we do this, this is based on our needs to bring in revenues. It's not based on the school's needs. The school's needs, you take a look at what's there, you do consultations with people, you offer a lot of services, but it's really based on what the kids in the school need. So I do want to say that was an administrative decision, and we recognize that. We recognize that, like, like a lot of people, right? We're, we're trying to deal with a deficit of funds. So... So looking to the future, we have room for continued growth. We're going to continue with this configuration of public-private. We are applying for grants as appropriate. Like I said, we just got one, $50,000. We applied for other ones this year. We applied for several this year. I think we applied for 12 so far, no, six so far this year. And we vet many more than that. I think we've invented three times more than that. The foundation is poised for continued growth. They do strategic planning yearly. They want to continue providing funding for a portion of the, of the department's budget, and continue to look at emergent needs. You know, they, they really ask us, if you, if, if the sky was a limit, or if you weren't just looking at getting by, what does our community really need to be healthy? So they want to fund that too, and that's very exciting. And then the thrift shop has great potential for growth. We've explored, we've explored many things. We've explored, would there be an expansion? How could we do other options? Right now, with, if we transition, continue the transition to paid staff, and with what's coming in the door, we still have incredible revenue growth there. And so that's what we're still focusing on. I think there are other projects that we take on and have looked at. We have done pop-up at summer celebration. We've looked at whether we want to do something like that elsewhere. There are many things that we take a look at, but we have a lot of growth right now, just where we are. And that can go on for quite a while. And after that, we have, we have vetted this with the community before. Would we like to do an expansion on one side of it, and that would gain another 2,000 square feet? So there's growth there. I do want to say that I think, it's just important to know that the, the general fund has always been a part of YFS. And like, like any organization like us, we're a full, we're a full social service provider, and there is no, without some other source of funding, there's, at this point, it's not enough dedicated and stable funding to keep us going without another option. So I do want to say that I know that there are continued conversations in the community. I know there's a potential study session on May 14th, and I'd like to see where those endeavors go. But as a department, we will continue to work with everything that we have, and we hope that those, those conversations can result in something that is fruitful. I'm going to, I have four recommendations that we'd like the, the council to consider tonight.
Are we supposed to go with one, or are we supposed to go with all four?
There's all, there's four. There's, it's four parts.
Okay.
Yeah. And it stems back to how we'll, how I asked to look at funding for 2019 and 20. So the first one is...
Cindy?
Mm-hmm.
May I interrupt you?
Yeah.
Just to provide some context?
Please do.
Thank you. So when we produced the packet, at that point in time, we did get some preliminary numbers on our year-end, 2018 year-end for the general fund. Chip worked over the weekend. He was able to wrap up the YFS fund. And so, again, we're seeing some, at the year-end, in the black. And so what you're seeing is us shifting the staff recommendation in light of that new information. And so that's, you, it's different than what is in your packet. So I just want to alert you to that, want to give you some background and context. And I guess with that, I'll turn it back over to Cindy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that context. So the first recommendation is decline the $87,000 generous donation from the Mercer Island School, Youth and Family Services Foundation, and the Mercer Island Schools Foundation to restore the elementary health, mental health counselors. And that's because we would cover those with the, the salary savings from previous years. Recommendation two, approve the proposed YFS fund deficit spending reductions in the amount of $315,000 for 2020 by increasing community-based counseling fees, generating revenue from the proposed school counseling fees pilot project, eliminating the administrative coordinator position, eliminating the pay-for-performance program. We need to add back an administrative assistant halftime, and then use $61,000 in salary savings from 2019. The third recommendation is having staff prepare budget adjustments as part of the first quarter 2019 financial status report to appropriate $170,000 from the 2018 YFS fund budget savings and surplus revenue to fully fund the elementary school counselors and administrative support in 2019 and 2020. And the fourth is to set aside $109,000 from the 2018 general fund budget savings for YFS, should the school counseling fee pilot project not come to fruition. That, that ends our proposal. I'd be really happy to answer any questions or hear concerns or...
So Council... So Council, this, this conversation has been a long time coming. As many of you would recall, back in February, the mini-planning session, Council did give direction to city leadership to please see if there was a way to reinstate those school counselors for the biennium. So that was the first step and that was considered to be a short-term solution while we were providing the community, again, to reiterate what the city manager said, the community to look at different options that it would have for establishing long-term and sustainable funding solution. So that was a little bit of the backdrop that, that took place there. We know that the coalition has been hard at work, lots of conversation going on. At the same time, we had a situation where I know many people in the community as well as the council have been eagerly awaiting to hear what the 2018 year-end close was. And we are right within the normal time range in terms of producing that for the community. It is scheduled for May 7th, yet we had this conversation preceding that. Originally, we wanted to have this conversation at the first council meeting in April and then unfortunately Cindy was not able to be here. The second council meeting in April, we had Dr. Luthar. So that again prevented us from having the conversation. So we do find some squeeze, so to speak, in terms of how we're going about this with that as a backdrop. What I would encourage Council to do right now is to look at many of the factors that, that Cindy presented to us. You know, there's a lot of moving parts. We have the thrift store, we have contributions, very generous contributions from various foundations. We have some pilots that we were looking at, et cetera. But I think what I would emphasize to Council right now is that we are looking at addressing that short-term, meaning this biennium here and now, and the different options we have with some of the preliminary information that we have coming regarding 18. So I would encourage us to ask Cindy any questions we have, clarification. I know I certainly have some about best practices and implications of, of the pilot project, et cetera. And then I think we can get into looking at what some of these recommendations are. So with that, Council, questions? Saleem Benson. Okay.
First, I want to thank you for keeping the presentation really solution-oriented. You know, I found, as you walked us through it, it's very simple to kind of follow the,
Good.
the series of challenges that you have and the growth that you've experienced over the years. I wanted to talk about the 60% of your funding that is the thrift shop. And at the planning session, we talked about potential cuts, potential additional revenues, and then the ideas that have been bantered about and some of them tried, but maybe not in permanency for increasing the revenues in the thrift shop. I know you want to allocate $109,000 in case the, the billing thing fails, but what we didn't see at that planning session was any kind of continued increase in the revenue curve based on changes that you might make in operations as you have made in the last couple of years. I've been a big supporter of those changes. Can you talk a bit about how you might look at that? The future of the revenue accelerators, the things that you will do that you haven't done?
At the thrift shop?
Yeah.
I can say that right now, our biggest, as we look at the amount of goods that we have coming in and our ability to get to, to process them and get them on, on the, on the shelf, is really, we need more staff. That's where we're being held up right now, which is why we're doing the transition to a staffing model so that we can continue to do that. I think Suzanne was telling me that Goodwill puts two items on the floor for selling one. We have, we put less than two, one and a half on in selling one. So our selling through of what we put on there is really high. And so we really, we're moving to staffing model to increase getting things on the floor and making best use of the floor space. We look at by department, by square foot, what brings in the most money. So continuing to use reports to drive that. Right now, it's really the staff. It's, I think we've maximized the floor space. We have built out, we have, we have changed how we do donations and really used every room and square footage if we can of the shop for space. Is there anything else that you're specifically, you have a lot of good suggestions in there. Is anything else that you're?
Well, they're not mine, they're just things I've heard.
In the business, yeah.
You know, that addresses throughput. And so throughput is going to increase sell-through.
Yep.
Which, you know, I think the, the data tells us is going to work.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, do you, are you, do you have confidence enough in the move, moving forward plan to estimate the additional revenue that you think you'll get?
With increased, you know, we played.
Basically an offset to the 109 contingency that you're proposing.
Yeah. Well, and the, so for the thrift shop, we think that there's a lot more room for continued growth, but we do that judiciously because every time we make a movement, we, we don't know when at its current floor space, when it will max out. We know we're not there. We take a look at the goods that we're selling through. We do a sample of what we're passing through to Goodwill and other places and we say, okay, if we could get this on the, on the floor. We do a lot of advertising, so if we could increase floor traffic, if we could increase getting these through, how much of that could we turn into higher prices? Because selling bulk is not as good as getting it on the floor and selling it at a, at a decent thrift shop rate. So I think for us, our, our inputs, we have plenty of them. We have a lot of things coming in, we're getting them out there as much as we can and we're getting out the door. We think that we have a lot more room to grow in, as far as patronage, and we think that there's more to do with advertising. We do see that when we have more goods on the floor and when they're getting in, out there quicker and there's fresher goods, we see more sell. So we think that we have a lot more of that. And Suzanne does most of those projections, so we do think that way, but mainly right now, it is looking at, we maxed our floor space, how do we get enough staff that we don't see the dips in revenues when our work, study and our volunteers go? And that's what we're still dealing with. But we have thought about that. We will max out at this site. When you get the right balance of having the right staff, that will happen. We don't think we're there yet.
Mayor, can I ask maybe the question a different way? You have seen obviously very significant revenue growth at the thrift store. From '17 to '18, you went up 9%. If you were able to go up 7%, you would collect about $122,000. So maybe another way to phrase it is, would it be possible to target an additional 7%?
Okay.
You know?
Yeah.
7% and then that covers your 109. I think that's a different way of saying what Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Is just trying to say is, hey.
Do not get that.
Could we? And that's probably.
Forecast the growth. Yeah.
Is that possible? Because, you know, I remember working retail and we would have a growth target of, usually it was 2%.
Yep.
It's low.
Yeah, yeah.
7% is high.
Yeah.
So, but you've done so well in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that a possibility? Is that, you know, could we bring more staff on? And then in, in, in exchange for that, could we see another?
Net revenue.
You know? Is that possible?
Yeah. Suzanne, I'm going to give it to Suzanne, Faleen, thrift shop coordinator, to have her answer that. And actually, yeah, you take that.
Hi. Yes, we do have a lot of potential currently with our current donations. First quarter, we actually did make our goal. That is also considering a really horrendous February where we had snow closures and low staffing and three people running the shop and no donation, no donations days. So we actually managed to make that up in March and made our target. For April, we were up 17%. And we are seeing these, this growth in apparel. Our weight in bulk sales to Goodwill are very good and there, we've done some samplings out of those bins and on average, there's at least $1,000 going there in each bin. So we load these laundry carts up that go to Goodwill and there are about three of them full of clothing per day. There's a lot of potential revenue there.
And do you know, Suzanne, would you be able?
Can you get in the mic, please?
Yeah. You do a lot of projections and I think what they're asking is, would you be able to do, and we would not be able to do this on the spot, but we could, would you be able to do projections where you take a look at what kind of staffing shifts would we need to make so that we could net 100, another $109,000? I think that's what you're asking. With given our tools and how we do our projections, can we come up with that to see if that would really, could we move to that model now so that it could avoid us having to do that 109? So do you think that you can make projections now, say, okay, we were, our next move, our next transition in staffing was going to be for another person, I believe it was merchandising on the floor, and then we're going to move somebody else up to full-time? What would we need to do to get it so that our net revenues could be past 109? Do you think you can make those projections?
I would say also, I just want to, lest, lest we put you too much on the spot, the extent to which you think that, you know, this is worthy of a, a study session, you can come back. I don't want you to, to have to make commitments unless you're feeling pretty confident. I realize you.
I'm pretty confident that adding an apparel position and adding a donation attendant position, because they're pretty busy out there. We're seeing well over 150 cars per day in donations. That's a lot of SUVs to unload for one person, five days a week. And what we're needing now is to capture the value that's coming through the door that we're selling in bulk to Goodwill. So I'm confident that the value is there and that it would be.
And you'd be able to make those projections?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure we'll land at 109, but I can give you a number that will be profitable.
So I think one of the things that we want to, that I'm going to take note of right now is that we'll want Council to have a conversation about whether or not we want to provide direction to come back to us with what that staffing would look like. So basically, it's a staffing model that gets us a net roughly $109,000. Starting in 2020.
Let me switch places.
19. Okay, thank you Suzanne. All right. Saleem, are you comfortable? Okay, next up, we had Benson.
Well, that, actually, that was rather encouraging. I mean, it was, so that's potentially good news. I'm certainly hopeful that the community comes together on a more permanent solution. Obviously, we were talking kind of a short-term fixes for YFS. Like, you know, Cindy, you and I talked earlier, I have concerns regarding the fees.
Yeah.
And frankly, concerns about the imposition of fees that in any way result in a decline of access and create any kind of barrier. Now, I fully realize you've talked about a sliding scale and, and what have you, and a dollar, it sounds like a nominal amount, but I'm just really concerned about any type of barrier that might result in a young person deciding not to seek assistance or counseling. So I guess the question I have for you is, and I think you probably have looked at this and I'm not, I haven't really thought this through, but I guess the alternative, if you're going to a fee structure of some sort, would be to do a, a flat fee per family that has children in the school district. Some people might argue, well, why am I paying a flat fee if my child is not using the counseling services? On the other hand, whether or not you're getting direct services, you also may be benefiting indirectly. But it's also maybe a way of shifting some of this allocation between the city versus the school district. And so have you given that any thought or did you think about it and decide, no, maybe this fee-for-service kind of structure is the better way to go?
Yeah. We did think about that, whether we would put out, and we did, we considered one for the whole counseling fee. We thought, you know, what would it cost? It would cost about $200 per child, per family, if you want, if they want to pay for the whole counseling program. And when we had this shortfall of 109, it would be about $2490 something, so it would be about $25. So we have thought about that and we don't want to, so yes, we have thought about that and that would be an option, but we don't want to do that if there's other things going on out there and they were, we'd confuse it. So I think we need to take a look at the direction we want to go, but that is, that could always be considered out there. Yeah. And that, you know, that's assuming that people would pay it, but yeah, no, that's something we consider.
And just a quick follow-up. Did you ever discuss this with the school district?
Yeah, I did.
And what was it?
I believe it was discussed with the PTA council.
Yep, yep, yep. Oh, yeah, we did. I'm sorry, I didn't really want that much. Yes, so I went to the school and asked about that. What did they think about that? Is that something that they could help us promote if they did? They can't help us promote it, although they can say that they support us, the school district. I went to the PTA, it's not something that they could, they couldn't collect fees through us, but they could certainly be willing to send out a notice to us and, and an appeal, a fundraising appeal and say, you know, for this year, we are short this amount of money. One of the funding solutions to do this would be, we're asking if you have a child, for every child you have, to, to donate $25. So that is also an option. And we've just held back on that because we want to make sure that we don't, we don't confound people because there's so many things happening out there. Yeah.
Wendy?
And there's so many "ass", so it gets complicated.
I know.
So two questions, so I'll start with one and then see if I can ask the other. This milieu versus pilot around seeing kids one-on-one, while you're looking at how that brings in money, could you also look at the cost, the social cost to having those counselors offline from groups and from special projects and emergency needs and playground work and lunchtime help? Like, in my experience, those counselors kind of troubleshoot all day long.
Everything.
They see kids in small groups, like having them available to do what they do and work with the kids they know and sort of put groups together as needed for as long as they're needed. That stuff you can't, that activity and that impact, you can't measure with, you know, billing insurance. And I get the billing insurance thing is great and needed for revenue, but there's also a cost to shifting hours and availability. And so that social cost of incurring that new model.
Yes.
I think would be useful.
Yeah. We could certainly give numbers as far as what we're not able to do. Definitely this model would serve for fewer children. That's very clear.
Right.
So all of those numbers would go down. So we would keep track of that as well. And I think that's why I say it's an administrative decision. It's not based on what the kids need and it's not based on best practices of a milieu mental therapist. It's just that we're all funding challenges and that's why we put this forward. But I will, we will keep track of that. That's very, very, very important.
And the kids and the impact are my highest priority. So I'd like to figure out the, the financing here and with our partners in the community. And then my second question is, short of counting on more sales at the thrift store for this $109,000 you're contemplating, how come you picked the general fund over the contingency fund as a recommendation?
Just as a recommendation, just that that might be more open? Oh, good.
Can you give me a break?
Jesus, yeah.
Just because, as you'll find out, you've already found out, but we'll go in greater detail on May 7th, there are some general fund expenditure savings, a little bit of surplus revenue that gives you a chance to use that one-time funding source, which I would recommend using that over contingency fund to address this 19, 20 funding need. Yeah, I mean, why, why touch contingency when you have some money from 18 in the general fund that you can tap first? It's no different than the expenditure savings, which I didn't anticipate in the, in the, in the YFS fund. Let's use that first to help provide bridge funding. It's temporary bridge, but bridge funding over the last for 19 and 20.
Great, we have Lisa and then Bruce.
Thanks. So that, I guess, big question maybe goes back to what we were just talking about here. And recommendation number three, it says appropriate $170,000 from the 2018 YFS fund budget savings and surplus revenue. Now, surplus revenue is not in the YFS fund, is that right? Now, surplus revenue is not in the YFS fund, is that right? I mean, it is general fund surplus revenue. Barry, it's not clear.
Sorry. So most of the, there's a large chunk of position vacancy savings, but in addition, thrift shop sales, remember when we did the 2018 thrift shop budget, the revenue and expenditures, we did it in 16 for 18, remember? And so thrift shop revenues ended up being better than what was planned, because back in 16, we weren't anticipating this experiment of adding more thrift shop staffing, which then generated greater revenue and greater net income. So thrift shop sales were better than, than expected in 18. Also, we had some accumulative investment interest in the youth services endowment fund, which we transferred into the YFS fund at the end of 18, that's like $31,000. So that's where the surplus revenues come from.
So it's YFS surplus revenue?
Yes.
So what was the surplus revenue from the general fund that you were just talking about?
Well, I thought I'd get into that on May 7th, but.
We're going to go into that on, on, on May 7th, when we talk about it.
So how much are we talking about that is general fund, YFS fund budget savings, and how much is surplus revenue?
The $170,000 is all from the YFS fund.
Uh huh.
Okay, and then, in recommendation four upright, is when it mentions the $109,000, that would come from the general fund savings.
Okay, so recommendation number three does not touch the contingency fund, and it doesn't touch any general fund revenues?
Correct.
Okay. But longer term, though, we're still, you're still projecting.
You've still got problems.
We still got problems, yeah.
Right.
So that brings me to recommendation number one, why wouldn't we accept this generous donation? And that's a question for Cindy, because it, it seems to me that, you know, it's, you have to take out a loan, you know, to buy a house or something like that, just because you find $20 on the street doesn't mean you don't take out the loan.
Yeah.
And it is a very generous contribution, and I, I thought that the foundation and foundations were all in on it. And it seems like it's a good signal in terms of how the community is willing to team together to kind of find solutions for the counselors and not rely 100% on the city, and so.
I think the reliance is on YFS, because that was why unspent YFS funds. And so I think you would generally use your savings before you take another grant, gift. That's what, that's the thought behind that, is that we should use savings that we have. I think there was also some sentiment that, you know, people in the community have focused on, oh, see, I told you they'd have a surplus, I know there'd be money. And so we're really trying to show, yep, there were some savings, and we will use those for the counselors, because there's been such a push that the city actually fund the counselors, regardless of where you were, politically anywhere, it seemed like everybody felt like the city should fund the counselors. So we thought that that was the best thing to do. I think also because I work with the foundation and I speak with them regularly about our department priorities, if they don't give the money here, I'm hoping and assuming that they would allow me to look at other priorities that will come down the pike, they're not going to take that and give it to somebody else, all the funds they raise are for YFS. So that money will come to us in some need, even if it's not this need.
Mayor. Yeah, I was also going to say, I think if we take a look at the letter that they provided, at least the tone that I picked up was, this is because the city doesn't have the funding we're doing this, but, you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the foundation.
And Mayor, of course, you know, before suggesting that we were declining this, I did have the opportunity to talk to the foundations and to alert them of this recommendation. So in my talking with the MIYFS foundation, I think it was clear that they felt like they would, they do anticipate a future need, and of course, they would save this for that future need. I think it just comes down to, you know, when that need actually does surface, I, I feel confident the foundation will support our need, yeah.
Counsel, what I want to just call out is we do have representatives of the, of the YFS foundation here, the extent to which you have questions that you would like to ask them, if they're comfortable, I think it would make good sense to invite them to the podium, just so that we know that we have that as an option. So, okay.
If Jody has something to say, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, so I, yeah, welcome if you want to come in and if you have some context, comments.
I'm prepared remarks. I'm appreciative of all of the constructive work that has been done, particularly by the staff and by the council in trying to find solutions.
Deb, is the microphone on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great.
I'll step closer. And I'm very appreciative of all the investment that the council has made, both toward the foundation and to the coalition work we've been doing. I want to assure everyone in this room and everyone listening that the council has been a respectful listener of the grassroots coalition effort. This has been a bunch of citizens that represent constituencies that are trying to look for a range of solutions. We have met individually, or tried to meet individually, with each councilperson to apprise them of our work. It has not been their work, but they have been receptive to listening to us. So no one should think that they have been inappropriately steering or recommending anything. This is a group of citizens that's been working on this, so, but we do appreciate your receptivity to our work. As for the foundation and the joint foundation's commitment to do the funding, we obviously, as I've expressed in this chamber previously, we have a deep desire to keep full-time mental health counselors in the schools, and we have a lot of evidence supporting the wide range of work that they do that is not limited to therapy. And I'm going to turn to Ira and invite him to buy him lunch, because I'm hoping I can really explain to him the value and the need for having those full-time counselors. So I hope you'll take me up on that, Ira. But when the foundation started to get inklings that there, that you guys had done the productive work of trying to find some funds that you could continue to dedicate to this community need, we really feel like, as stewards to our own donors and to the community in general, that we will redeploy, redeploy those resources saved this year, both to husband resources for the future, which, as we all know, is on uncertain financial footing. And the more we can set aside now, the less the cliff will be if bigger cuts have to come later. Secondly, we also have some residual effects that are reducing services at YFS that may not be apparent to people. When our adminis, when our, I say our, when YFS is, I feel like our, I'm the foundation, we're not the city department, but I feel like it's all ours. When the administrative coordinator stepped down eight months early, you know, they have no extra bandwidth to manage volunteers to open the door, you know, they've got HIPAA information in there, they can't just leave their doors open for anyone to walk in. That means that currently, the office is closed on Friday for food pantry clients. Those are the types of things that if we need to subsidize an administrative coordinator right now, that $87,000 is worth keeping a five-day-a-week food pantry open. It is worth helping them deliver the services that our community needs and deserves. And at the same time, we want to be able to show our donors that we are servicing the community across the board, whether it's senior services, youth services, economically-challenged families, and we're not leaving anybody behind in the service of funding school counselors. We are super glad that it seems to be that we have a short-term solution, but we're very committed to working toward a long-term solution and husbanding those resources to the highest and best needs right now, and saving for the future is the foundation's priority. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
That was super, thanks. I think, I'm going to have to go ahead and take a turn unless counsel objects, because Jody, you're, you're here, you know, I think several of us have heard many of the similar concerns about the billing, you know, the hours where counselors would actually be charging for their services. And there's a lot of concern, I think, as articulated by several council members, that that could be perceived by the youth as a barrier, just the mere fact that that exists and could prevent some kids who need help from getting the help that they need, irrespective of sliding scales, et cetera, et cetera. Can you speak to this issue? Because I think it is one that concerns me. I'm interested in the, you know, of course, the operational potential of charging X number of hours, yet at the same time, I think I bet one, one child lost is, is one child too many, so.
Right. So I'm, I'm not a social worker by training, I'm a lawyer, so discount all of my opinions as opinions, but I do spend a lot of time in the YFS building with the YFS professionals, and I just had the very great privilege the last couple of days, to Ira's point, we really feel like we do have to do a better job educating the entire community about the full gamut of services that are being provided in the schools. To the extent people think that their model is the 50-hour minute of therapy, that is not what they spend the bulk of their time on. So I do have grave concerns about access. I have two high school students of my own, I'm a girls soccer coach, I'm a girl scout leader, and I see that when, you know, anxiety and severe manifestations of that anxiety and depression step in, it's already hard to access services, and, and many times, it's very difficult for these youth to tell their parents about that. They feel ashamed, they feel, they don't want their parents to think that they're failing. And any inkling that there is going to have to be a fee that has to come through their parents, or that perhaps has to get billed through an insurance bill, I think that will become a severe barrier for access for people that could be in a precarious situation. Secondly, I think it provides a barrier for access on the entire milieu model that the YFS services provide. If we have our counselors locked down for three or four hours in 50-minute sessions, they are unavailable to help our special needs educators that often do have eruptions in a classroom. And the mental health counselors are the first responders, and special needs teachers are not as flexible about being able to step outside with a student who is having some regulation issues while leaving a class that needs more attention than typical performing classes. So that's going to be a barrier of access there. Wendy alluded to the recess groups, the grief counseling, the social-emotional mindfulness stuff that they do that helps all the kids regulate their behavior and really be able to enrich the capacity for them to learn. That's not a barrier of access of talking to a counselor about a particular problem, but it is a barrier of access to getting the best out of their education that they can get. So to say that it's not the optimal model, I think it's a crazy model to adopt, but that's just my personal opinion, and I have my personal view. And I would like to see a way where we can get on a footing where we're maximizing grants, we're maximizing all the revenue streams in the way that we can that are not going to impede access.
Thank you.
Anything else for the foundation? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Celine, Scott, don't.
I just wanted to briefly, so I, I may guess the council is going to decline the offer of the, the donation tonight, very generous donation, in light of the additional funds or cost savings. But that said, there's been this cadence issue between the city's biennial budget cycle and the city's academic year cycle. And there always ends up being this six-month hanging chad on the back of the school budget that we can't address until there's a long-term, term solution for funding YFS services, whatever it might be. So I, I would just ask, as you go back, and assuming we don't accept the donation, might you ask the foundations to just think about reserving some capacity for that? Because it's about continuity of services while we, as a council, your organizations, as we all discuss kind of a, a long-term view of YFS and the programming, what the appropriate level programming and funding for that programming is, if we can figure out the hanging chad, take that pressure off, it would, I think, be a service to the whole conversation.
Right, and I actually should have worked that into my first answer, because, again, we have a surplus for this year for next year, we're still talking, you know, into 2020 at some point and 2021. Yes, we have an interest in maintaining funding for these counselors, hopefully being on a short-to-medium-term window to get a sustainable funding model. I think, you know, I'm more pleased, as pleased as anyone, that the foundation has been able to realize the growth, and that is all because we have a generous community that supports the whole range of services. And I don't want to put, I don't want to elevate the mental health counselors in schools as the end-all, be-all, because we need our senior services, we need our emergency assistance services, people support all of those services. But we are responsibly husbanding that money so that we can step in if and when it is needed in the short term. And we want to continue constructively working with other people in the community toward a long-term solution, so that this doesn't come up every two years.
Jody, can I just thank you and your board, and the Schools Foundation Board, for coming together and all your hard work in the last many months and all the painful community dialogues and trying to hold coalitions together to figure this out? Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The dialogues aren't painful, it's a great community.
Right, and you're getting stuff done, so thank you.
Okay.
Cool, thanks. Bruce, you were actually next on the list.
It was a while ago. I kind of lost, lost track of it. Cindy, I'm too going to ask about the counseling fee pilot project. When my kids were in the schools, we had the good fortune to really not use the services of the counselors hardly at all, but when we did, it was a closed-door conversation with parents and child and counselor, and a closed-door conversation with parents and counselor. And I'm trying to understand how that's different from a closed-door time.
Session.
Yeah, session with a counselor, because it, it feels to me like the counselor isn't constantly walking the halls, the counselor is sitting down with children or children and parents, either with some financial skin in the game for the parents or not. And I haven't heard anything that suggested a scenario where kids would be turned away if they didn't want to ask parents for funding, or if parents didn't, didn't choose to pay for it. So I, I feel, you know, I've heard it's crazy, I've heard it's not clinically what we want to do, but I'm, I'm not fully there yet, and I'm hoping you'll help me understand why you and Jody are as passionate as you are about this.
Oh, I think, I think mainly because we don't know who won't get services because of this. I think when people stop in for, for one session, something's gone wrong and they want to meet with you, that's a one-session, that's a one-off. What we're really talking about is kids who would be referred out, who really need ongoing therapy, where something has really happened in their life. And usually, we're talking about trauma-informed care, where there's something emotionally or psychologically that's more than that they can handle in a one-time session, they really need help regulating their behavior and staying able to be in school and, and able to function well. So we, we wouldn't focus on those one-offs or one or two meetings. Our biggest concern with this model is we don't know who will be in that category. You don't know if they have the parent that doesn't want, doesn't, they don't want to share with, you don't know if they have an abusive parent, you don't know if somebody's died, we don't know anything that's coming down, it's fairly random, and you don't know their resources. So we don't know who's going to come in, and we don't know if we'll make these numbers. But I think our biggest concern really is just a barrier, that, that a child won't feel comfortable if they have to sign papers and have a fee charged to them or talk to anybody about it, I think that's one piece. And I think the bigger piece is that it really takes away from the, the work that they do. We'll see fewer kids, we know that the work that they're doing right now is really the model of school-based mental health counseling, that you have a variety of services that you do, and you should support the people around them. When kids in particular, when they're little, it's the environment that they're in, so you want to make sure that their parents, the teachers, the parapro, anybody around there is better able to handle what's going on with them. So you spend a lot of time making sure that their environment's doing well, so that's a lot of the work they do now, and that's what would decrease. So that's part of our concern with it. Does that answer it, Bruce?
I guess I'm viewing it through the lens of, under no scenario would there be, the first time a child comes to see the counselor.
Turned away.
There's a, you're turned away, or you're said, you know, you're told, please sign this paperwork, or we got to talk to your parents and ask for money. That's not what's proposed at all. It's, it's more, there has already been a continuing conversation with a child, I assume, and it, I would suggest it's already advanced to the point where the parents are involved, so it's not the child asking. But what I'm suggesting is, I guess, in terms of structuring this, I would never want to be asking the child to figure that out, but if the parents have already been involved, that's a different conversation entirely to me. So the scenario in my mind is the, the child's got some issues, the parents have been involved, the parents have been in talking to the counselor, the counselor then says, you know, we could carry this on, but financially, we're trying to cover this, would you like to carry it on? That's a parental decision at that point, not, not something where the child's, because I completely agree that, it makes no sense to be asking a child to, to make that decision.
And I think that's really, that's accurate if they're in elementary school and part of middle school, but when they hit 13, and there are many kids that come in and don't want to include their parents, whether, yeah.
I mean, to me, that's easy, they're not part of the program. So I, I just wouldn't want that to, the program gets thrown out because in the high school, the kid doesn't want to talk to the parent, and you're, you're sort of there with the paper saying, well, you got to go talk to your parent. That, to me, is a broken concept for the program. I would be back to the idea that, no, it's, it's when the parents are in talking to the counselor and.
I think, I think you're right, I think for some.
I'm less averse to this, I guess, than, than what I'm hearing, because I, I'm envisioning a structure that is, to me, less barrier-building and more plausible.
Yes. For some, it will work, I think you're absolutely right, for some it will work, young or where parents are involved, I agree.
So counsel, we, we have a number of recommendations, do we have any further questions for Cindy, for staff, for the foundation who's here with us, or do we want to start working our way through some of these recommendations? Okay, Benson says, let's go. So I want to suggest then we start with the, the first recommendation, which is actually to decline the $87,000, very, very generous donation from the foundations, directed at restoring the elementary school mental health counselors through 2020. Counsel, anybody want to speak to that? All right, all in favor of recommendation one, thumbs up.
Someone needs to make the motion and second it.
Does it need to be a motion, or is it a thumbs up? Because I didn't see it presented as a motion per se.
We use the term recommendation, because that's what's in the agenda bill, it says recommendations and then.
So you want us just to say, I move to, and then as per?
I move to decline the funds from the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Foundation, the Mercer Island Schools Foundation, the amount of $87,000.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, I think that was unanimous. Lisa, did you vote?
I did.
Okay, great.
Mayor, excuse me, just for clarification, who seconded the motion? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to let you decide. It was very unanimous, very harmonious.
Yeah, four people seconded the motion.
Okay, we have recommendation two, otherwise known as motion number two.
I move that we approve the proposed YFS fund deficit spending reductions in the amount of $315, $307 for 2020 by everything on that list, one through six of the presentation, which might be the same as AB 5553, page nine? No, they're different? Okay. What we have in this and what was just presented? Got it? Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, is there any discussion? Benson?
I think I'm going to probably vote against this one only because I have concerns regarding the counseling fees and the pilot project, but, you know, I just want to make sure that's clear. Otherwise, I'm fine with the other recommendations.
I'm going to speak to it as well. I too am not going to support this because I am not supporting point number two based on the conversations had today. I think what I would suggest is, given the conversation or the, I think the scenario that Bruce and Cindy outlined, when the parents are joyously part of this process, that there might be a pilot there, but given that we don't have that figured out right now, I don't want to make that a string. So as it stands, I will not be supporting this, and I would come back with a revised motion that would be excluding point number two. Is there any further comment?
Are you going to amend that? Maybe you shouldn't.
Well, I'm just curious because there was two proposals to cover this $109,000 if it didn't work out. And I thought it was clear that they were going to try and as soon as they sensed it was failing, scuttle it.
Figure it out.
And fall back either on increased thrift shop sales or a general fund commitment for the $109,000. I thought that was the signal I got from them, and so I was going to go with their signal, not try and reverse engineer.
Correct.
Whether this was a good or bad idea because they wanted to try it.
Okay, so I have a different understanding. My understanding is based on what I've heard coming from our YFS staff and the opinion coming from the foundation is that the school counseling fee, as it is currently constructed, would potentially put some of the students at risk of not seeking service. And for that reason, I would not support that.
I have a question.
Being said, I would support having the team come back just with a revised pilot that looks at an engaged and participatory parental environment.
Cindy, I had a question for you. If you could tell me, the way that you got to $109,000 was through three sessions per day per counselor, and I didn't know if all of those were billed, how much they were billed at. But if you could tell me the percent of all the sessions that it would need to be billed to get to the $109,000, you know, is it like half of all sessions, a quarter of all sessions, or is that a hun, all three have to be billed to get to 109?
It means that of the work that they did, at least three of their sessions would have to be paying sessions. So they may see kids outside of that because they're not going to turn away a youth that won't, you know, they can't pay or won't share with their parents yet. And we always work toward having parents involved, but it means that they would need to secure at least three kids that are paying.
Per day?
Yes.
Per counselor?
Yeah.
At every school?
Yeah, so it's about probably 15 a week, 15 to 18 clients a week.
I see why you want to back up funding source.
Bruce?
But we do have one. If we take all four recommendations, I think we've got belt and suspenders at that point. So I'm going to look to Chip. Do you have any suggestion as how to gracefully reduce our expectation regarding the pilot project? Because I think, I'm in support of that. I mean, I, you know, I'm suggesting it be less onerous. Others are even further in that direction. So how do we get, essentially adopt all four recommendations with a somewhat lower expectation of this pilot? I'm hopeful that we continue the pilot project but lower the expectation of it. So, and so Chip, I'm looking to you. Would you change the number in recommendation two? Would you scratch? What would you do with recommendation two to sort of fix it with respect to what we're talking about? Or would you just leave it?
I really don't know. I did like the idea that was discussed, I think Saleem came up with it, about exploring the thrift shop. We're talking 2020. And staff is already looking at kind of the next phase of increasing thrift shop staffing to generate more revenues. Now, whether we can generate an additional $109,000 in net income, right, not just revenue, net income, that's kind of a tall order, in my opinion. But it would help chip away, pun intended, at that $109,000 that we're trying to hit. So I would see value in maybe.
But I think that's different.
I want to, I want to make sure everybody's getting a chance. So Bruce, go ahead. Do you want to clarify, and then we'll get Wendy and Lisa?
Thank you for.
I'm not sure what else to do to number two.
Okay. Number four, though, and I see number four is either it's coming out of increased thrift shop revenue or it's coming out of general fund. And so that's kind of a separate thing. But what it's doing in either case is it's backstopping the counselor fee program. And to me, that's the, you know, the suspenders where we've already got the belt in putting the fee program in place. So I just was looking for, is there a modification of two that you recommend?
I really defer to YFS. I'm not sure.
Okay. So we've got a motion to do two, and I would suggest we stick with it with this understanding that we're asking that the program be less high expectations.
And I would remind us that we came up with this pilot project seeking revenue, right? So this pilot will inform our long-term problems, right? So we're going to try this and learn from it. If it's not working, I'm sure Cindy and her staff will know how to backpedal and make sure our kids are safe, right? So let's give it a shot. We've been working on this for weeks now, maybe months. Let's just give it a shot and see where we go, right? Otherwise, we're going to reverse engineer this and drag this out another two months and it's summer.
Lisa?
Yeah, thanks. I was just going to make the observation that it was a good clarification that this is for 2020. So I don't know if Cindy has any ability or intent to try to institute this program generating revenues from fees in September in 2019, and whether that informs us going into 2020 or what. But it seems like we can leave recommendation two as it is. I don't know what we're going, what I'm going to want to do with recommendation number four. Seems like there's plenty of time to kind of address the issue in recommendation number four based on what we learned over the next six to nine months.
Right. And we are doing that. That's exactly, we're working on it now so that we could pilot it because, again, we need to make sure that we cut counselors, so we are going to do that in September. Yeah.
Cool. Benson?
Okay, I'm going to suggest that as far as recommendation number two, that perhaps items one and two be struck. So now there's $109,000 gap. And so I guess my suggestion would be that in order to address this gap, we have recommendation number four and potentially also perhaps adding in a more formal manner, recommending to the YFS that they do a further study regarding the increase in the revenue from the thrift shop to help fund that $109,000 gap. And perhaps come back to the council with a little bit more further analysis regarding this pilot program.
I think I need to clarify, Benson, because I think it's $109,000 for the school counseling fees. It's another $15,000 for community-based counseling fees, which is point number one. So if you strike one and two, you have to come up with a hundred.
Which I understand we have increased those counseling fees.
So that's already a factor.
Okay, so it's just number two then?
Okay, so it'd be just point number two.
Yeah, okay.
If I, if I may, counsel, what I'm sensing is that there's a lack of comfort with the proposed school counseling pilot as it was originally conceived. I think there's general interest in seeing a pilot go forward, but one that is perhaps more refined, is for lack of a better word. Bruce, the example you gave, Cindy, is when the parents are engaged and willing. So to me, that's a point where I'm comfortable. I don't know how to articulate that.
I think that, first of all, if you do this model, that's who's going to say, yes, we'll pay for counseling, is the engaged and supportive parents. We just need to find three of them per counselor per day. So, right? Because the other people who.
Or not, or not. I'd be perfectly comfortable with this being a pilot that gets us a fraction of the way there, could be half the way there, could be a third of the way there, and then we backstop with the other funds.
Absolutely. That's exactly what we'll find.
Okay. Okay, so in other words, we're ready to pay the $109,000 if it flops? Okay, I can get there. Benson? Actually, I hate to say, we might not meet you. Well, we do have a motion, but I think if we have the understanding of what that, it says the proposed school counseling fees pilot project. I think if we all have an understanding of that pilot project now, looks like. So anyway, going back to the original motion, the original motion is recommendation number two in its entirety. Counsel, is there any further discussion? Are we ready to take a vote on it? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes five-one in favor.
And I move to prepare budget adjustments as part of the first quarter 2019 financial status report to appropriate $170,000 from the 2018 YFS fund budget savings and surplus revenue to fully fund the elementary school counselors and administrative support in 2019 and 2020.
First and second. Counsel, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes six-zero. Final motion, motion number four.
So are you guys okay if I try and incorporate the thrift shop into this one original motion?
It depends on what you say.
Well, I'm going to try.
I don't, I don't know. I think it's, I personally have to say before there's even a motion on it, I think recommendation number four is premature.
Oh, yeah, you're premature. So I move, I have moved to set aside $109,000 from the 2018 general fund budget savings for YFS should the school counseling fees pilot project not come to fruition. Sorry, let me start over. I move to set aside $109,000 from the 2018 general fund budget savings or from additional YFS thrift shop sales for YFS should the school counseling fees pilot project not come to fruition.
So basically, at the end of 2018 general fund budget savings or from additional YFS sales?
Thrift shop.
Thrift shops sales.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
So point of clarification, I guess, well, does somebody have to second it before?
Yeah, it's somebody.
Second.
First and second, okay?
Then my question is, is do you have to have the thrift shop revenues in the motion or aren't those thrift shop revenues already belong to Youth and Family Services and don't need to be addressed in the motion?
All the motion is doing is allocating the excess revenues, should they appear, from thrift shop to the stock funding, the SCAP funding on 109. So it's pre-allocation of those additional revenues.
So rather than, and the difference basically comes out of the general fund budget savings?
Yeah.
Okay. So in other words, if YFS thrift store sales, let's say, generates an additional $50,000, then the difference would be $69,000 that would come out of the general fund budget savings?
Exactly.
Okay.
But we would be setting us, I think the goal would be to set aside the general fund budget savings. Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get there through the sort of the logic of, what you want to do is set that aside now.
Set the entirety aside.
Set the entirety aside. And then what you want to do is use that only to the extent that, first, the pilot project doesn't reach its target and thrift shop sales don't fill the gap. I know where we are. I don't think the motion quite said that, but I think we all are in agreement that that's what we're trying to achieve, or at least those of us who are talking about it. I don't want to put words in anybody else's mouth.
Can I ask Cindy what she thinks of that? Because.
I think we do.
That earmarks it.
Yeah, it, it's interesting. I don't know if we've ever had something where it says if you have an increased revenue, you designate toward that, except that that was my first task, as Suzanne and I was going to say tomorrow morning. Suzanne, I want to get together with you. We're going to, we're going to write up these projections. So we do that anyway. It is new to say you're going to, I mean, I think you might just want to say, or increase in YFS revenues because there might be other ways that we get it. I haven't ever seen us designate a revenue from some source towards something, but, so anyway. But that is the first thing that we're going to do. That was a great suggestion, and I think we'll do those projections, and I think we'll try to bring it back to the next meeting, so.
Okay. Well, it's been first and second, but it says the thrift store sales as opposed to what Cindy said would be YFS revenues. So she suggested different wording. I generally prefer to have another council member amend it. I can do it. All right, I'm going to move to, such that the motion reads, set aside $109,000 from the 2018 general fund budget savings or from additional YFS revenues should the school counseling fees pilot project not come to fruition. So you second the motion has been amended and seconded, so we're going to vote on the motion. I'm looking at Deb, hoping I'm getting the order right. We're voting on the amendment. All right. All in favor of the amendment say.
So I'm going to suggest there's, I'm going to read to you the language I've got at this point, and then we'll figure out whether to go with it. So I'm going to suggest that our goal is to set aside the money. Boom. Set aside $109,000 from the general fund budget savings for YFS. That part is, to me, the right thing to do now. But then the logic of the should the school counselor fee project not come to fruition and should thrift shop sales increases not cover the gap. So what I'm trying to do is, because the or, the way you've got it structured right now, we shouldn't be wordsmithing up here, but you're, you either have to set aside the money now or not set aside the money now. You can't or the money depending on a future event is the problem I'm having with the motion as it's been crafted previously.
So you would actually?
I would have the first phrase be definitive, not with an or. And then it's, the or is down in where the money's coming from. It's either coming from, it's either coming because the counselor fee didn't provide it, or it's becoming, it's coming from thrift shop sales increase.
So at the end of the sentence, you would put, well, let me read it out loud, what I, what I think I'm hearing. Set aside $109,000 from the 2018 general fund budget savings for YFS should the school counseling fees pilot project not come to fruition or should thrift shop revenues not cover the gap?
I used and, but.
And, okay.
Because I'm thinking that.
And, okay, that's fine.
Comes from either of those, and to the extent it gets to either, you don't need to.
Wouldn't you accomplish the same thing just by adding a sentence, separate sentence that said additional YFS revenues should be used before general fund?
I'd be happy with that, too. Yeah, that would be cleaner, I think, to do it that way.
Okay, so Saleem, you've got another one, and then we're going to have to withdraw the amendment or we're going to vote down the amendment. But anyway, so, Saleem, before we lose it, can you, you had a second sentence. Is that correct?
Sure. So I had before general fund savings are used, YFS, how do you want to word it, Chip? Additional surpluses or additional revenues?
Mayor, Mayor Burton, can I?
Okay, sorry, let's look at it.
So our thought in making this recommendation, having you make this motion, is just that it's recognized when you talk about the general fund, the year-end report on May 7th, that you recognize that there is this $109,000 that we're not quite sure what this pilot program would be. So our point in saying set aside is very different than saying appropriate. So all that we're asking with this motion is that when you are looking at the 2018 year-end report, you are marking $109,000 that could possibly go to cover this for YFS fund. And my point in saying that is staff would of course use any additional revenues that are generated from a thrift shop or otherwise before coming back and asking you to appropriate the $109,000. Does that make sense?
That does, and therefore you recommend?
Leaving the motion as is. Because you have, you have already, you have already directed staff to go and look at increasing thrift shop revenues by bringing back a staffing model change, so that's going to happen. So I would just say, this is just to note for May 7th, that 109,000 of that money that's, you know, from 2018 budget savings, might need to be appropriated for YFS.
So, not Saleem's?
Yeah.
Recommendation, or as, as drafted by staff?
So, it's not saying that you're appropriating it, it's just saying, acknowledge that it's there, that we may need to use it.
Okay, so now I'm gonna turn to Deb to make sure we do this procedurally. We have a motion to amend that we've not yet voted on, and we have a motion that does not reflect the recommendation that Ally just made. Is it easiest just to vote them both down?
Well, but they already have a second, so they have to vote. No, they already have a second, so they can't control it.
But then we need to vote down. But no, which is different.
Yes. So, you have a motion and a second on the floor for your amendment, and you have a motion and a second on the floor on your original motion?
Correct.
Because you have a second, you need to vote, you can just vote?
Vote them down.
Six, yeah, on both, and then give me a good, brand-new motion. Which is what staff wrote on the power. Or the original, or the original recommendation.
Great, so we're voting on the amendment right now, all in favor of the amendment, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
All right, so the amendment fails at six oh. We're back to the original motion, which is not what's on here. Let's just put it's not what's on here. We're gonna vote on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed? Nay.
No, 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 no.
Okay, we're gonna start back, this is the.
Move to set aside 109,000 from the 2018 general fund budget savings for YFS should the school counseling fees pilot project not come to fruition.
It's been first and seconded by Wendy and Saleem, it's been seconded. Deb, do you pick one? Okay. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that I think this could have waited until May 7th when we were talking about the budget. I would probably like to just think about what it means that we're doing. If setting aside doesn't have any real budgetary impact like an appropriation would, I don't know that this means anything. I'm, I'd feel more comfortable if I had some time, more time to think about it and we helped, we dealt with it when we dealt with general budget issues on the 7th. So I will probably vote against it, but only for that reason.
Okay, great. So counsel, if we're ready for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes five one. Thank you, everyone, especially a big thank you, Chip, I know you worked on it over the weekend, you too, Cindy as well, I know we had Julie and other staff members, and a very special thank you to the foundation. It's with great joy that we decline your very generous offer. At least mine.
Madam Mayor, if I could have just one, one moment on the tail end of this. I, I have asked the city manager, and I'm gonna ask here sort of publicly, I, I would very much, I think there's real value in council members having in-depth tours of the thrift shop, and someone has suggested maybe not just tours, but actually spend some hands-on time at the thrift shop, but I, I think, I think that would be a valuable exercise for us, and I would ask that if there's council support for that, that we go ahead and try and get that set up.
We can get that set up, yeah. If there's interest, we'll do that. I'm, I'm seeing Lisa walk away, so I think we're gonna go ahead and take a break until 9:20. Counsel, I think we are in the home stretch for this evening. Alrighty. Cool, all right, so our next and final, and, sorry, item of special business tonight is AB 5554, Planning Commission's recommendation for code cleanup amendments, and it's the first reading. So for this, we welcome Community Planning and Development Director Evan Maxim.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Actually, I'd like to introduce Andrew Leon, one of our planners for Mercer Island. He's gonna do the initial introduction and then I'm happy to, to help him with any questions you may have.
Hello, counsel. As Evan just mentioned, I'm Andrew Leon, a planner with the City Mercer Island, and tonight I'm gonna be talking about the code cleanup amendment, agenda bill number 5554. So just for a little background, under ordinance 17C-15, the city council directed staff to periodically review the city code to check for inconsistencies, errors, that kind of thing, and basically do code cleanup periodically. So again, the purpose of this is to improve consistency between different sections of the code, to ensure that the code is consistent with the general intent of the city council, and to correct errors in spelling and wording within the code. So this particular amendment has sort of three mini amendments within, oops, within it. The first one is clarifying amendments. These are amendments to MICC 19.01, which is the non-conforming section, 19.02, residential development standards, 19.04, that's just a code citation error in the business zone, and then 19.16, which is definitions where we corrected a few definitions for clarification and also added a few that didn't exist at the time. The second component is a noticing amendment. I'll be going into that in a little more detail on the next slide. It has to do with notices of decision for major single-family dwelling building permits. And the third component is a department name amendment. A few months ago, the Development Services Group changed its name to Community Planning and Development Department, and Mercer Island city code references either the Development Services Group or DSG in various titles. So that amendment is intended to correct those names to the current name. So yeah, going back to that second component, the noticing amendment, so ordinance 19C-12 established a requirement to issue a notice of application for all major single-family dwelling building permits. At that time, a separate notice of decision was not required, and that went into effect in May 2017. The procedural code amendments that went into effect in November 2018 under ordinance 18C-08 created a standardized approach to all public noticing. Basically, that, it made it so that any application that required a notice of application also required a notice of decision, and this inadvertently doubled the noticing requirement for major single-family dwelling building permits. So for this amendment, ordinance 19C-04, we propose to revert the noticing requirements for major single-family dwelling building permits back to what they were under ordinance 17C-12. So basically, it would only be a notice of application, but no notice of decision. So, next steps, I'll turn it over to city council for, for streaming a discussion of the code amendments, and we expect another meeting date in May 21st, 2019.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Looks like Saleem's teed up, then Benson and Lisa.
So I went back and I had the benefit of reading the cart transcript from the Planning Commission meeting that was in March 20th, and the discussion around the railings on rooftop decks didn't seem like it was very involved. Can you talk a bit about, was that code cleanup item added and then the Planning Commission struck fences off of roofs and settled on railings? And then there was really no substantive discussion around rooftop decks with railings?
So when we originally proposed the language for this, it was fences, but with some talk with the, the Planning Commission, it was kind of determined that railing was probably the more appropriate architectural term for that sort of appurtenance, if you will.
So we were talking about a rooftop deck having a fence, which was amended to rooftop deck having a railing, which was then added a sentence about the railing should be 80% transparent?
Correct.
And counsel, I'll add a little bit of color commentary to Andrew's comments. You know, the, these questions come up when we're in the midst of permit review, and so as your staff, we're trying to prompt the, the Planning Commission or the city council to give us additional direction. So in, in the context of the rooftop railings, we, currently, you sometimes see houses that are built that have a relatively flat roof, and you'll see a deck built, and the deck is located below the 30-foot height limit. The question that has come up is whether or not the rooftop railing or the rooftop fence, as it was originally characterized, is a similar appurtenance that's allowed to exceed that 30-foot height limit. So if you look in your draft code this evening, I think you'll see on, on page four, about...
Yeah, so it's near the top at three.
Lines eight through 12 or so. There, there's a list of things that are allowed to exceed that 30-foot height limit. It can't exceed five feet above the 30-foot height limit or 35 feet. And they include things like electrical equipment, antennas, chimneys, things of that nature. And then it contains those words, and other similar appurtenances. And other similar appurtenances might be a rooftop railing, or might not. And that, that was really the original question that CPD was trying to ask the Planning Commission.
So the genesis of this was your planners seeking to clarify, could a rooftop deck that needed a railing, because it is a rooftop deck?
Is that allowed?
That began at, let's say, 30 feet, continue on to 35 feet?
Right. And this is really, we're trying to make sure that we're applying the council's intent in our permit review rather than have us issue, for example, an administrative interpretation, which may or may not accurately reflect your, your guidance here. So I think your, your CPD staff are frankly kind of neutral. Your Planning Commission did discuss this fairly thoroughly and landed with the, the draft language that you see in your packet tonight.
Well, I read the discussion, and it didn't seem there was any substantive discussion about the merits of allowing rooftop desks on 30-foot tall structures already. It was really about, you know, should it be called a railing or a fence? Is a fence on the ground and a railing in the air?
That's certainly my recollection from the March 20th meeting. The, the prior meetings were far enough back that I can't speak to how thoroughly that conversation was.
So it could have been discussed at a prior.
It, it could have been, yeah. And I, you, if I may, Deputy Mayor, you of course know that some of your commissioners are architects and have experience in the building industry, and so they, they bring their own opinions to this conversation.
Sure. Okay, I mean, just to finish a thought, counsel, I know I'm asking questions, but my thought is, as we went through the residential design standards, we had a lot of discussion about massing and height, height in particular, and we wanted to limit structures to 30 feet. And these additional allowances were for things like... were for things like flagpoles, service leads, chimneys, fireplaces. I guess in here, we're adding solar panels, but rooftop decks that have railings that then require another sentence to talk about 80% transparency is not code cleanup in my mind, and in fact, it's creating incentive to get you more 30-foot tall, flat-top boxes that we were trying to level the playing field, and we were trying to give the new RDS code some time to settle, to see what do we get. And so before a change like this is made, I would, well, I would support removing it and seeing, spending more time on the RDS code being in place to see what we get in real world. So that's all I have to on that.
What do you mean removing it? Just taking out this whole section, so it's not substantive?
Just removing the part, on line nine, you would remove rooftop deck railings, and then on rows 11 and 12, you would just strike the clarifying sentence about 80%.
But then doesn't that leave it open to interpretation by staff when someone comes in with a plan, and if we don't have clarity, then they don't get that third story, or the hill, or whatever the conditions are for that unique property it creates?
My request to the Counsel, if I may, Councilmember Wyker, is it would help city staff if you were just provided direction around this. So if the desire of the Council is not to allow rooftop railings to exceed the 30-foot height limit, we can add language in for your next draft that says that.
Well, okay, but I think to Saleem's point, it is then no longer a code cleanup.
It substantially changes our residential code, which opens up...
Yeah. Okay, Bruce?
Continuing on this point for a moment, later, and Deputy Mayor mentioned it, it says, "Rooftop railings shall be designed such that at least 80% of the total surface area consists of visual open spaces," as you phrased it here. I know that a citizen wrote in to us, or at least wrote, and I read something about, well, this will lead to glass railings that will always be dirty and will essentially defeat the visually, visual open spaces intent. I'm curious, the concept of dirty glass resonates with me. I've certainly observed that in some circumstances, so I'm curious how you would avoid having that be the end result of this. Visual open spaces, I guess to me, would be better served by actual non-glass spaces, but I'm looking to you to help me explain whether that's an issue here or not.
So I think in the current draft, visually open does mean visually open, so whether it could be glass or not would be another question, right? If the concern is that we should not allow glass railings of that sort, certainly we could revise the language in this last sentence to indicate that it's open framework, not glassed, and that would be a fairly straightforward text amendment as well. Really, what we were trying to carry forward to you tonight was kind of the direction that we heard from the Planning Commission around the subject.
Lisa? Okay, thanks. Well, I concur with what Saleem is expressing. I'm very concerned about this allowance of rooftop railings defeating the height limit, and in fact, encouraging certain, you know, flat roofs with decks, because now, guess what, we're at 35 feet. I also have a hard time envisioning when a solar panel would need to extend as much as five feet over the surface of the roof, and the visual impediment that that might create for neighbors. I mean, maybe solar panels could be a foot, but again, that's not code cleanup, that's kind of substantive changes. So I would support rejecting all of the building height limit amendments right now.
Can you comment on why five feet for solar panels?
So, again, we were amending the existing allowance to exceed the height limit. So if you imagine a house that was built to the maximum height, which is often the case, or just an inch or two short, it's 30 feet tall. Many of our solar panels are a foot, two or three feet even, if they're angled to catch the southern exposure. They are unlikely to be five feet tall, at least in my experience. The Solarize campaign, of course, has been something that Mercer Island has long supported, and that's really where this particular question came up again. We were looking to clarify what is included in that other similar appurtenances language based on permit review. And so that's the nature of both of these amendments. It's not intended to be a substantive policy shift in some fashion. It's more, is a solar panel sufficiently similar to electrical equipment, antennas, and chimneys, such that it is a other similar appurtenance, or not?
And I think that's exactly right, the way you phrase the question. And in my view, neither solar panels nor rooftop deck railings have enough commonality with plumbing stacks and flagpoles, in terms of the mass that they have relative to those other skinny little things. It seems substantive to me, so just...
Wendy, I see you.
So I'm thinking about solar panels and solar, so the Solarize campaign. I don't think we want to disincentivize solar adoption. Bruce?
I'm going to support you on that. I'm certainly in favor of the solar panel addition. I'm also in favor of the rooftop deck railing addition, as long as it avoids this dirty glass problem.
But five feet on the solar panels?
Okay, sorry, I'm going to pause.
To be clear, yeah, to be clear, I'm not suggesting that people would do five feet, but I'm also not suggesting that you look at antennas and say, well, antennas can be seven, but lightning rods can be eight, and plumbing stacks can only be three. There's, five is just a number that's put here as a, you can't go above that, and I'm comfortable with that, not with the expectation that...
Benson?
Yeah, I think the thing that troubled me about this language is simply that it's more than a code amendment. It did appear to be more substantive in nature, so that's my major objection. You know, I, on a personal level, I would like to see the solar panels kept in place, because, again, I don't find them as structurally as, perhaps as large as a rooftop deck or something. And so I'm, it's probably not a great reason, other than the fact that I think I agree with Councilmember Wyker, that certainly you don't want to disincentivize people from seeing if they can actually install solar panels. But I am troubled by the rooftop. I actually like, but I also recognize the need for the staff to have certainty, and certainly for the public to have certainty on some of these issues. And so I sort of like Evan's proposal that if we don't want to have rooftop railings, that we actually state so, and provide that clarity and that certainty.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take a turn, which is, in some senses, I look at this at the beginning of paragraph three, antennas, lightning rods, et cetera, and to me, solar panels feels like it's in that same category, in that same class. The other point being that there are a lot of houses where you would subsequently want to add on solar panels, perhaps a second owner or a third owner, such that it wasn't originally constructed as part of the housing design. That wouldn't be necessarily the case with a rooftop deck, et cetera. So for me, I'm comfortable with solar panels remaining in there, so that we do continue to encourage the residents and recognize that just because a house was built in 1955 doesn't mean a solar panel was envisioned in 1955. When it comes to the rooftop decorating, to me, that is living space, and that's a different category of use, and I think that it would be a substantive change, one I would want Counsel to have a conversation about before determining what they should look like. I think it's a question of should they be allowed. So I'm in on solar panels, and I'm out on railings at this point. So, Saleem asked the smart question, and that is, how do we land this? At this point, you're taking guidance and feedback, so I think what we're doing is a thumbs up, thumbs down, as we parse through some of these different questions, correct?
That would be appreciated, Mayor.
Okay, so we can be, we can be super clear. We can do a thumbs up on solar panels and a thumbs up on rooftop deck railings, unless anybody objects?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right, ready, set. Who wants to keep solar panels in? Thumbs, oh, alrighty?
One clarification. I would like to keep solar panels in. I would not like to see them extend five feet above the existing roof line, and I don't know how you can limit that. If you just need a different section, maybe it's...
The existing code contemplates that. Build a 20-foot house, put a five-foot solar panel. How about it?
No, 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 five feet above the 30-foot.
You want to keep that?
I don't, I don't want to see a 30-foot house with solar panels extending five feet above the roof line.
I suggest, Mayor...
What's the likelihood of this?
I think it's very unlikely, in my, again, in my experience. But if the rest of the Council concurs with Councilmember Andrew's stated desire, if you can give me the straw poll on that, we can incorporate language that would essentially seek to minimize the height of the solar panel above the existing roof line, not to exceed five feet overall, but we'll have that minimized component. Or we could create language that says it shall not exceed two feet or three feet, if you can give me a little bit of guidance there.
I personally would hesitate to give you guidance, because I know absolutely nothing about solar panels and how high they should be off a roof, and that would be like, I know, I was going to say, we can go back to designing that baseball pitcher's mound that we did about five years ago.
Yeah, I get it. I don't want to, you know, micromanage it, but I just, I have concerns for neighbors' views and stuff, so I, yeah.
Because I think the solar panels, I think I might venture to guess, are generally optimized by specialists who go out there and look at, this is what makes sense.
I believe that's correct, yeah. And I believe it really depends on the roof pitch and the angle that they're trying to capture the sun exposure. So I, my recommendation to you would be to have us seek to minimize, but not to exceed five overall, and we could add language to that effect. Well, Councilmember Wong, respectfully, in my experience, we have seen some town center projects incorporate solar onto their roof in the commercial area, and that's often behind the parapet wall at the angle, but not really germane to the conversation this evening.
And I will just say that because solar panels are optimized when they're angled, if you're on a flat roof, they're going to be standing up to some extent, as opposed to laying flat.
Okay, so I'm trying to get back to landing this. Evan has, with regard to solar panels right now, which is what we're talking about, Evan has suggested language that would be to minimize, allowed to, encouraged to minimize, no, but no taller than five feet, no height greater than five feet. I'm sure he's going to be able to put that more eloquently. Can I see a thumbs up on that from Counsel, please? And thumbs down?
I want two, but I can't, because I just, I see a flat roof with a solar panel standing up.
Yep. All right, so you've got direction on the solar panels. Let's go to rooftop deck railings. All in favor of keeping the rooftop deck railings language in there? Thumbs?
Can I just ask a quick question? How many of those rooftop decks do you see in a given year or building period?
I think it's come up a handful of times since we adopted the residential development standards in late 2017, maybe four or five times in my sense of it.
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor of keeping rooftop deck railings in as a code cleanup, thumbs up?
So I was proposing, I don't think I'm going to win on this, but I was proposing it be in, but modified. So give me room for that somehow in your motion, and I'll be happy.
Well, why don't you go ahead and propose what you want to propose then?
Yeah, like I say, I think it's going down, but maintain the first bit of language, the second bit of language at the end of the paragraph, Evan to somehow clarify that it doesn't include dirty glass.
Or 1980s tinted glass.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of something other than dirty glass? Thumbs up? All opposed? It went down while she's...
Just don't think about the dirty glass.
All right, so that went down. Now, I think we're back to the topic of rooftop deck railings, irrespective of what they're made of. All in favor of keeping rooftop deck railings in the proposed cleanup? Please show your thumb up. All opposed? Please put your thumb down. All right, is not included. All right, that's one. That's one.
And that's sufficient for you to then write language that says it's not allowed, or do we need to specify?
I understood from the Council's prior conversation that this would then prohibit rooftop railings above 30 feet.
Right.
Okay. So, question, Counsel. We can go through this based on points of highest passion, and I think that the solar panels and rooftop deck railings was definitely high up there. Or we can just start at the very beginning and ask if anybody has any concerns or questions, and then just hopefully tick them off pretty quickly. Should we start at the beginning?
I have two small ones, but it's up to you where you want to start.
If they're small, if you don't mind, maybe we'll just go from the top, work our way through. All right, so I would be on then page one of seven, the section, "Exterior Alteration or Enlargement of Nonconforming Structures." Does anybody have any questions or concerns about this section? That's, we need just a second.
I need to find it. This is 1901.
Councilmember Wong, in your email, which I believe has been shared with the Council at this point, you had suggested adding the words "existing" into the formula strategically, which I think just clarifies that formula.
Okay.
So I'll take that as guidance for the Council.
Can you read that in its entirety, please?
So, starting on lines 42 on page one, it would say, "Formula percentage of exterior walls altered equals parenthetical sum of the length of existing, existing being added, walls to be structurally altered, divided by the sum of the length of existing exterior walls." The two existings were added into that language.
Does that change anything?
It's actually a clarification of the formula itself.
Just out of curiosity, how do you measure the length of a wall? And by that, I mean, where does the tape measure actually go? Does it go on the exterior surface of the wall, whether it's an inside corner or an outside corner, or does it go on the longest part of the wall?
It's the exterior of the facade. Yeah, it's exterior of the facade, and actually, the thought experiment we were playing with a little bit is how much, if you have a, what's the term, ziggurat? If you have a ziggurat-shaped house, so a house that kind of steps in or does the inverse, how many times do you go around that exterior facade for each level? Which is why we ended up specifying it here, because we were coming to different answers, again, as applied.
As long as there is a pride and true, nobody disagrees way of measuring the wall, I'm happy. I'm not sure in looking at this what that was.
I think the architectural community doesn't always agree with the method, which is, again, why we're trying to clarify here.
But this doesn't clarify that.
It does not, no, but that is a standard practice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Counsel, we're still then looking at exterior alteration or enlargement of nonconforming structures. Any concerns? All right, hearing none. Then we will move on to page two, "Nonconforming Sites." This would be section three, landscaping, open space, and buffer requirements. There was just one change from minimum to maximum. It looks like we got that backwards. So looking basically at page two, line 42. All right, good, okay.
I had one comment on, actually, on clause four, about that. I don't know, Evan, you can explain it. I mean, you responded, I was fine with your suggested change, but...
So clause four, which is lines 17 through 18, there's a phrase, "Provided that the existing nonconformity is not increased." So the idea is you can modify the nonconforming building or structure, and as long as you don't increase the degree of nonconformance, it's okay. We actually have, I think, slightly clearer language used higher up in this section, and so my email correspondence with Councilmember Wong, I suggested we just use the same language in this subsection.
Can you please clarify which section you're actually... Can you please clarify which section you're actually looking at?
It is on page 2, lines 17 through 18.
Oh, so we're back in the previous section?
Yeah, it's in non, it's in the non-conforming section. And it, so what I'm describing to you is really a, a clarifying change again that I don't think affects the substance of the, the outcome. It's just a way of, of phrasing it slightly more clearly. And I wish I had the actual clear, clarified code right in front of me. Bear with me for one moment.
I mean, it would, I mean, you, you have it, so it would read, "provided that there is no expansion of any existing nonconformity." That was the language that you sent.
Yeah, thank you. Pardon me. Yes, thank you, Councilmember Wong.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm fine, yeah.
Okay. Counsel, any other concerns? All right. So then going back to, again, to section F. F3 landscaping, open spaces and buffer requirements. The only change I identified was on line 42, which goes from minimum to maximum. Any concerns?
Nope.
All right. So now we're then in section C, yard requirements. Number 2, yard determination. Counsel, any feedback or questions?
How does this definition of a front yard change? I mean, would it potentially create different front yards for existing structures than currently exist? Or do existing structures and existing lots that have a, an address and a, you know, front door and whatever, get kind of grandfathered in?
No, there, there's not a grandfathering in the sense that you just described it, councilmember. The intent of this change, though, again, was really to clarify the existing text. So if we've drafted this correctly, which I believe we have, we've tried to simply break out the concepts that were embedded into paragraphs of text, into essentially descending subsections.
I see.
So that's why we have both the existing language in the, in the strikeout and then the proposed. What it does do is it makes it clearer as to how we move through that descending order. So when I say descending order, I'm really looking at lines 21 through 25, for example, on sheet 3 of 7. Meaning that we first start with, it's next to the street. The second, it's oriented towards the primary entrance of the building. And then the third is, we look at the surrounding orientation of adjacent lots. And the reason this really matters is that when we're looking, especially at a new house construction or a major renovation to a house, we spend a significant degree of our time trying to determine where the front yard is, because that drives the location of all the other yards and setbacks around the building. And it won't surprise you. We sometimes get creative interpretations in as part of our permit applications. So we, we are trying to make this clear.
Okay. I, I was a little confused about what was going on here, but I think I see it now. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any other comments regarding yard determination? All right, hearing none. I think we're good for now. A section E, building height limit, I believe we've already addressed that at the top of the conversation. So then we move on to garages and carports. Any concerns, any questions? All right. Section C, height measurements, focusing on multiple retaining walls.
So I'll note here, counsel, a few minutes ago, with your discussion around the railings, there was kind of this concept of, is this a new idea or is this a refinement of the existing code? The height measurement and the kind of idea of stacking retaining walls to exceed our limits on, on retaining wall height, that is a, a little bit of a new concept in our code, because we're trying to close a, a potential loophole in your original residential development standards, which is why we've added this additional section. So I bring it up because I, I can't say that this is just clarification. This is in, we're trying to mirror the, the council's intent all the way through this section.
So basically, this requires a, a terracing sort of a separation for the heights not to be considered added together?
Right. So we limit the height of retaining walls both in setbacks or in yards, and then overall inside the, the main portion of the lot. What we started to see is that we'll have one retaining wall that's, say, 12 feet tall, and it's stacked a foot behind another retaining wall that's 12 feet tall. Believe the council's intent was to limit the, the retaining wall height to 12 feet. The upper retaining wall, if you will, surcharges the lower retaining wall, which is where we get this one-to-one separation. So this is, this is expanding on the concept that's already in your code, but I can't truly clar, you know, characterize this as clarification versus trying to pick up council intent.
And that's most significant on sloped properties?
Typically on steeply sloped properties, yes.
So how many times a year, a quarter, have you, do you see this?
Uh, it's come up once that I know of since the 2017 amendments, and possibly more, just because I'm not super close to the permits. When it came up, it was of the nature I described to you a moment ago.
Counsel, any comment? All right, good.
I just, one more que, so if this comes in, is that property not allowed to build? Or do they just have to, have to be more creative? Or what happens if this restricts the ability to do anything with the property?
If it became a situation where they couldn't build at all, of course, it would be ripe for variance or, or one of our kind of extraordinary relief mechanisms. More commonly, it's a design preference. So we're, we're talking about really how far the terracing should be separated on the site, and, and people have a preference on, on how that design is put together.
So it narrows preferences. Okay.
We're good? Okay. So moving on now to the section on commercial offices and the section required conditions. Looks like you changed the ordinance reference. And then down below, added a footnote.
So the footnote, I'll just remind the council, and Andrew went through this, I thought, pretty well. This is the footnote that implements all of the text that you see on the screen tonight related to noticing. So I'll remind the, the council that back in, in last September and October, we talked about standardizing our noticing approach. I was asked the question earlier, can I really say this was inadvertent and not the council's intent? And the honest answer is, I don't know that I can say that with any certainty. I can say that there wasn't a, a discussion by the city council or the planning commission articulating this as an intentional change. And I have listened to your, your tapes at this point. And it wasn't something that the staff had purposefully proposed as an amendment. This was a, an oversight on our part. The amendment, the ordinance that was adopted in 2017, so the top bullet on the screen, this was related to appeals and how appeals were best managed and making sure that we really provided an opportunity for the community to both be aware of major single-family building permits, this new house construction, additions of a certain square footage of either gross floor or lot coverage. And at that time, the council direction was provide a notice of application, but don't provide a notice of decision. Again, we had the inadvertent change in 2018, and what we're proposing to do is change it back to the previous direction you provided more explicitly in 2017. We did ask the planning commission whether, the planning commission believed this was a intentional change in 2018. They indicated that they did not believe it was. So that, that's the basis for the inadvertent statement.
So what's the net effect if we go back and delete the notice of decision?
So currently, when we process a new building permit, we issue two, two notices. A notice of application when the permit first comes in the door, we post it on the site, we mail it to everybody within 300 feet, we put it into the bulletin. And we issue the same, effectively the same notice when the permit is approved. With this proposed change, we would not issue that second notice. What we've found in, in just administering this, this noticing exercise for major, uh, single-family building permits is that we have a relatively low number of people who are interested in commenting or finding out what's going on on the, the property next door with the notice of application. And those who are most concerned tend to stay in the conversation, if you will, with the city staff as we go through the remainder of the permitting process. The effect would be that in 2017, we were directed by the city council to notify people who received a notice of application and were interested in the building permit, we would notify them when that permit was issued. And that allows a neighbor to file a timely appeal if they believe an appeal is warranted. That if we pull back on issuing the notice of decision, we would continue to follow that council direction from 2017, but there would not be posted or mailed notice or notice in the bulletin.
So that doesn't really impact a person's right to appeal?
It doesn't affect someone's right to appeal at all. If you're, if you're an interested party and your, your neighbor's building a, a new house next door, you can still file that appeal.
Good. Okay. Counsel, any further comment then? All right. Then we're moving on to definitions, the first one being finished grade. All right, hearing no comment. Moving on to gross floor area.
I have something on this one.
Okay.
So without the amendment to Arabic numeral 2B adding that, what were first-level covered decks considered?
Should turn my mic back on. They were excluded from the gross floor area. And they were excluded because that was the direction I believed, I understood from the city council as part of your adoption of the residential development standards.
Okay. Got it. Well, and, and so the, the thing I'm struggling with is, of course, I wasn't part of that discussion, but de, decks that are second or third levels and are covered by a roof are included in the gross floor area. And I don't see a, a functional or, you know, other substantive difference between what second and third level covered decks due to the environment and the surroundings and the mass of the house versus what a first-level covered deck would do. I mean, a first-level covered deck could essentially basically be a room without windows. And so it does seem to me to impact the, the gross floor area. And I guess if I ever build another house on Mercer Island, I, I probably would want that really bad. It, it seems to enlarge the permitted gross floor area in a, in a way that's, I don't know if it was contemplated before, but it seems inconsistent with how you count the second and third levels.
I could speak a little bit to the residential development standards discussion if that's useful. The, I believe the planning commission focused on this most heavily in their update to what we essentially account for in their gross floor area discussion back in, in 2017. And the thought was that when you had a, a roofed deck on the second or third story, and let me pause for a moment, the gross floor area in that conversation was really seen as a proxy for the bulk of the building. The visual bulk from the building, of the building as seen from the neighbor or from the street, and something that we wanted to control in addition to lot coverage and setback. For the second and third stories, you can see clearly called out, I believe in the, uh, really in that line 21 right above, that when they're roofed, they count towards gross floor area. The planning commission, I think, went back and forth as to whether or not first-story decks or porches that were roofed should also be counted towards gross floor area. Gross floor area is typically anything which has a roof over it and is inside the, the structure, if you will. And ultimately decided that they didn't want to create a negative incentive for things like roofed front porches or backdoor living spaces or things of that nature. So I, I believe they intentionally excluded the, the first-story covered decks from the definition of gross floor area, which is why we proposed the language as drafted here. Again, if, if the council at this point is uncomfortable with that, that clarification, my request would be, I'd, I'd rather not leave it in kind of the undetermined category. I'd rather either call it gross floor area explicitly or not gross floor area explicitly and avoid the, the permit confusion that we see as applied.
Yeah, Saleem.
So when, when I think through this, I, I'm thinking more about the unintended consequence. So if you were to remove this from GFA, then, well, basically permit it, you could get a covered wraparound porch. You could get a back patio that has maybe just glass covers over patio doors. Those start becoming GFA at some point where people will have a disincentive to do them, but they provide some benefit, either greater outdoor living space or some more architecturally interesting feature. And when you look at the corner of a wraparound porch on a house, you see daylight right through it. It's literally a covered porch. That, to me, is not GFA. It's lot coverage, it's counting against your impervious surface, I'm guessing, right? It would be covered by all the side yard setbacks, all of the daylight plating. There's no, you couldn't go put a covered porch into a side yard because it's, uh, breaking a loophole, right?
Right.
So generally, I, I'm not sure that I have the consternation over the GFA component of this on the first floor. I think architecturally, you would be incentivizing, you, you would get less interesting buildings if you did this.
I'm actually going to chime in. I, I think I'm in support of Saleem in part because what, what memories I have of this is the sense that it's on the second and third floor where neighbors tend to feel that their light is being blocked. Hence, if there's a roof, it's not only the visual element of having greater massing, but also the potential for that roof to somehow be shading the sun that, or, it to be shading the sun that's coming into the, the neighbor's property. So if I understand correctly, I'm with Saleem insofar as being comfortable with the amendments to the second point. Wendy?
I am happy to follow the planning commission's lead on this.
All right. Benson, Sil, Bruce? All right. Okay, all in favor of keeping it as amended, thumbs up? All opposed? All right. Go forward with as recommended. We then have the next paragraph, hardscape. Lisa, any? Okay. Anybody, any consternation about artificial turf and detention tanks being added? All right. Seeing none. The next section, kitchen. Questions? I did have one.
Go for it.
Okay. Well, mine is basically the, it says, "an identifiable area inside a building for the cooking, blah, blah, blah." There's many people I know who have this setup, but it is outside of a building. So can you clarify why the importance of distinguishing between inside and outside?
Actually, I think this is probably one that Andrew can speak to as, as clearly as I can, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
So basically, whenever we're reviewing building permits for houses, if we see a room with like a bunch of kitchen appliances, like a refrigerator, stove, all that stuff, that kind of sets off a trigger for us that, hey, is this an accessory dwelling unit? So that's sort of where we're trying to draw a line of, hey, this is a kitchen. And basically, so we know that we need to prompt the applicants to either come in for additional permitting or, you know, sign an affidavit saying that we are not using this as an accessory dwelling unit. That's more or less why we're trying to nail down what a kitchen is. Obviously, if it's outside, you wouldn't be using it as an accessory dwelling unit. So that's sort of why we only address interior.
Okay, that, that's good for me. Anybody else, any concerns about kitchen definition?
Just being, just being difficult, I'll ask. The way it's phrased, it says, you know, on line 34, "that includes in the following." So I'm just being difficult now. I'm, I'm a person who doesn't want this to be called a kitchen, but I've got a sink, I've got appliances, I got a refrigerator, and I got a counter and cupboards. If I just don't have ventilation in there, it seems to me that because of the word "that includes", I see, I've, I've stuck around with it. Because by "that includes," it assumes, I assume that it means that includes all of the following.
So if you have item number three, the ventilation component, pardon me, if you have a cooking appliance?
Yes.
And it's something other than a microwave, the ventilation component is likely going to be required by the building code.
Okay.
So I think actually, the inverse of the situation that Andrew described a moment ago, is that we, if you just go off the building code definition, all you need is a microwave ventilation and a sink. And we ended up kind of role-playing out the different scenarios here, and I think we concluded you could put a microwave in your bathroom and maybe meet the kitchen definition, which seemed to be the wrong way to go on this, which is why you kind of got a more lengthy list that I believe we pulled largely from the city of Seattle.
I don't want to slow us down on this, I just...
So you want to keep going?
I'm done.
Microwaves in bathrooms?
Yeah.
Okay. Which many people do do during remodels, speaking for myself. But anyway, so I think we're good with kitchen. Open space? Going, going, gone. All right, definition of remodel, which would be page seven, line five.
Sure.
For my own education, would, does... Transforming the structure of a home, or the, well, the additional removal of the exterior or interior of any structure, would that include changing out windows?
That's a good question.
So I think it's important to note the context of the term we're trying to define, which is, it's really a threshold term for when we require additional review in our town center for design, design review on parking.
Okay.
So windows, just no, but we do sometimes see interior space heavily remodeled around, say, a restaurant area, and we may end up wanting to review for parking in that kind of context.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, I don't know where else the word remodel is used in the code, so I don't see how it necessarily plugs into things, but...
It's primarily really in our town center.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, final section, yard. All right. Going, going, gone. All right, so we have gone through the entirety. We provided you guys feedback. Do you need anything else from us?
So with the discussion tonight, mayor, if I may ask for a motion similar to the one that we have on the screen, I do have this set to potentially go on the consent agenda if the council is comfortable with that, given the guidance tonight, or it could go on regular.
I would move to set ordinance number 19CO4 for second reading and adoption on May 21, 2019 consent calendar.
Second.
First and second, any discussion?
Well, and I'll just add that I concur, because I don't think there was anything that we asked you to do that we felt was ambiguous or needed a further review by us before you could put it together. If there was something that I felt like you were taking away...
You can always pull it off the consent.
Yes, indeed.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
So discussion, I would just say, could you reach out to a few of our builder friends and community development folks to just see if they have any input on this before we put it through consent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. All right, great. We're now coming to other business, and for that, we have the planning schedule. I know we have a May 14 potential meeting to discuss. So turning it over to Julie.
Who turned it over to me?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So there's a copy of the email that Julie sent this afternoon with the changes to the planning schedule, looking ahead over the next six months. So the first one is to have a special meeting with the Mercer Island Coalition on May 14. So we are checking to see if that, if your availability for that.
I am tentative, I am potentially out of town that week, so, but don't hold it for me.
So I think what I would encourage is that we look at this study session as being potentially longer than 6:00 to 7:00 p.m.
This one?
Yeah, it says 6:00 to 7:00, and I'm, I think it's pretty substantive, so...
6:00 to 8:00?
Probably closer.
So I won't be here that night?
So we're missing two. May 14. Are you out for the whole week, Lisa, and are you unable the whole week, Wendy? Or is it just that particular night?
But I feel pretty in sync with that, and trust you guys to, it's a study session, right, it's not taking any action then?
Correct.
Yeah, this is where we'd be talking about the long-term funding opportunities for or why of us. You will not? All right, we're down three people, I think we can't... And are you gone the whole week?
Counsel, can you talk into your microphones, I'm sorry?
Okay, so Saleem is gone Monday and Tuesday?
Yeah.
Lisa, you think you're gone the whole week?
I'm potentially out the whole week, I could, though, possibly call in.
Okay. Wendy?
What night do you want?
Well, are you gone the whole week, or is it just that one night?
No, just that night, I have plans.
Just that one night, okay.
That I can't switch.
All right. I'm not sure that we've got the ability to figure it out tonight, can we send out?
We'll suggest a few more dates.
Yeah.
Is it too much, it's too much to put into the May 7 agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That has to go out tomorrow, or in two days anyways, so...
I could better do like something the week of May 7, like another meeting like on the 9th or something, but I know that's maybe not good for people either.
I think we also need to meet with the coalition and make sure that it works for them as well. Let's come back with some other suggestions.
Okay. So the next thing that we're looking at is the special joint meeting with the planning commission on July 17. So you have a regular meeting on July 16, and then we're looking to see if you can do a joint meeting with the planning commission the next evening. It's their meeting, so you would be coming to their, or you'd be holding a council meeting during their meeting time. We could, we would meet at 6, because it's a special meeting.
Yeah, that sounds...
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'm just going to go through the rest of this, we don't have to make decisions this evening, but we just want to get it on your radar. So August 20, traditionally, we have canceled the second August meeting. We didn't, we haven't done that the last few years because of various issues, but we are proposing that again. September 3 is...
Wait, you're proposing we cancel it or not cancel?
Cancel it, yes, yes. September 3 is the day after Labor Day, and so the question is, do we want to cancel or move this meeting because of the holiday weekend? September 10 could be a special meeting, moving the 3 to that date. October 1 is Rosh Hashanah, and if we were to move the meeting a week out, that won't work because it's Yom Kippur. So we're looking that we may need to cancel October 1. And so that's out there.
Because September, we have our second meeting on September 17, maybe there's the chance to put something at the end of September?
Yeah, the only caution is that then we would have a September 10, 17, and 24. That's three meetings back to back.
Or if we could do something like the 26, or...
Yeah.
Can we do October 2?
We could, we just run into planning or design commission meetings that we conflict with in this room. So we have a lot to kind of think about, but we'll keep playing with some dates. We're also going to propose October 15 as a joint meeting with the Mercer Island School District Boards, that would be a study session during our meeting from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then November 5, as we know, is Election Day, and we could move it to the 12th, or we could move it to the 6th as well, I mean, I'm sorry, the 4th, so Monday night. The 12th backs up against Veterans Day, which is also going to be a three-day weekend because of that holiday. And then the last thing to look at is potentially canceling December 17 meeting, which we have traditionally done. So...
So where do you need decisions? There's a lot to absorb.
There's a lot to absorb. I think the most important thing right now is, we'll find a date for the special meeting with the Mercer Island Coalition for that study session. And then I think August 20, if you would like to cancel that meeting. And then if you'd be okay with moving the September 3 to the, to September 10.
And you need that tonight, or just noodle it? Okay.
Noodle it all.
All right.
We'll come back to it in a week.
Cool.
Just kidding.
Counsel, any upcoming absences? We need to excuse Dave. Well, it would be nice if we excused Dave.
Move to excuse Dave.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, Dave has been excused. I would call out that I will be absent June 4, but you will be in the highly capable hands of the deputy mayor, I'll be gone for a week. Just a last reminder to the public, I think we're still taking applications for boards and commissions, please, please, please. And then finally, the next meeting we have is next Tuesday, which will be a regular meeting. So that, we're adjourned.
Too late. It's been cut off.
Bill signing happening. There's a climate bill signing happening, the governor will be in Seattle on May 7. I guess that's after our next meeting, so I could have announced it then, but for anybody who's interested, you are invited to be there.
At what time?
2:30 p.m. in Seattle at the Rainier Vista Neighborhood House, I think it's called. I can get you details, if you're interested.